Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the Thursday, August 5th agenda for the Davidson County Board of Commissioners to order today. Commissioner Elliott will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Heavenly Father God, we come before you this morning seeking your wisdom. Father, we ask that you help us as we govern the people's business here in Davidson County. Father, may we always hold our rights and our privileges and our freedoms secure. Father, let us all remember our oaths that we took to uphold the Constitution and the state constitution of North Carolina. And Father, I just thank you, God, for being able to serve with such patriots. And Father, I ask that you would lead, guide us and direct us in everything that we do in the name above all names, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debbie was running around like a chicken with her head cut off getting that done.
As you see, we moved, we put some flags back there so that we could face you, so, and you've got the flags this way. So it's great to see so many people with us today, leaders in our county, and we appreciate you so very, very much. I'd like to take point of privilege for just a quick second, and I know my husband is not watching because he's at work. He's a workaholic, as you know. Today is our forty-third wedding anniversary. We are, we were and are high school sweethearts, and I just want to shout out to him and celebrate today. So if I see a big smile on my face, that's the reason.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Forty-three years. I'm not going to specifically call out names because I'll forget somebody, but thank you. I recognize all of you and thank you for your service. We do have a special recognition today. I do see our sheriff, Sheriff Simmons, is with us, and we are here to recognize Lieutenant Billy Louie, so I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Yes, this is a very special day honoring one of our own, Lieutenant Billy Louie, that would never honor himself. No one would have even known it unless the person that he actually saved come forward. So that's very cool, and we knew it from the news. They come wanting to know, wanting to find out. But on the evening of the twelfth of July, twenty-twenty-one, Lieutenant Billy Louie was in Stamy's Barbecue with his wife, Angela, off duty, just there enjoying a meal when a gentleman had some difficulty and his heart stopped. Instead, just like first responders do, he didn't run the other way, he ran towards the problem. And he was able to get down, diagnose the problem, call for nine-one-one, and he administered CPR to the gentleman. He brought him back to life, and he is a saved man today. We're here to honor Billy Louie today, but we're also here to glorify the God that he serves and put him in that position. And at this point, I'd like him to come up here. We had, we acknowledged him for the lifesaving award, and that's what we're going to present him today.
Well, I appreciate the kind words from the sheriff. I didn't anticipate receiving anything like this. I think the secret got out earlier this week, and I found out about it, and I'm just honored to be here. I appreciate what the sheriff has said, and I appreciate those. It's just I made the suggestion to recognize my effort there to help this young man. His name was Darryl West, and me and my wife was seated in Stamy's and heard the other customers inside the restaurant encouraging him to hang on, and that's when I stepped up to see what was going on, then I noticed someone had already started CPR. As I went over to try to render aid, the gentleman I could tell was already tired. If you've ever rendered CPR, they say that you get tired real quick, and so I was able to jump in and help and was able to work with Darryl for several minutes, probably, I think about seven minutes. But first of all, I want to thank the Lord for answering a prayer. As I was working with Darryl, Darryl would come in and he'd go out, and after the second time, I didn't think Darryl was going to come back, and I just asked the Lord to keep Darryl alive. I said, please don't let Darryl die on me. And the Lord answered that prayer, and I want to recognize him first of all for answering a prayer and being a good God to us. And I want to thank Richard Green for teaching me CPR. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be able to do that. So, you know, a student's only as good as his teacher, so I appreciate Richard Green, and I just appreciate all those that were involved that day, and they all had an effort and a hand in it. I'm very appreciative of the EMS workers that came in and took over and was able to get Darryl to the hospital. And I was, had the opportunity to meet him and his wife the next day. I went and checked on him, and he was doing good, and he was just, he was the way I wanted to see him, alive. So I just thank each and every one of you. I thank my fellow coworkers for their support, and just thank you so much. Thank you.
Pastor? Madam Chair, could I say one thing?
Certainly.
Pastor, I really, I really appreciate you, and every one of y'all that donned the badge are a hero in my book, and I know that the board feels the exact same way. Y'all are in a high regard, and I thank you for always running into the face of danger. I thank you for the sacrifices that your family has to make for you to be on call, to work second and third shifts, to always be worrying about, you know, if Mom and Dad's coming home. So thank you for keeping my family safe, our kids at our schools safe, and our community safe. God bless you, brother. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Lieutenant Louie.
It's a fair, it's a great example of how an officer recognizes that he's on duty twenty-four hours a day. It's also a great recognition of the character of the individual that steps forward in times of need for our fellow citizens. So as a commissioner, as a citizen, I'm very proud of you, and I'm very thankful for officers like you.
Madam Chair. Lieutenant, I'd just like to thank you as a commissioner and as someone that still wears a badge. We get all kinds of attitude and everything else every single day, but it's amazing at the law enforcement officers in this county, and as it proves here today, the fact that they serve our almighty God and then do the job that we do. So thank you, sir, for the job you do. Thank you for all of, each and every one of you. Sheriff, you've got an amazing staff, and we appreciate what you guys do, and I just wish more citizens could see just what kind of exemplary men and women that serves them each and every day, and when they go to bed at night and lay their head on a pillow, what's out there protecting them and keeping them safe. So thank you all, and thank you, Lieutenant.
Take a picture. Please register if you're interested in speaking at public address. We, if you've had time to take a look at the agenda, are there any changes for the agenda today?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Trul. Have a motion and a second. To adopt, please cast your vote.
Mr. Louie, you voted no.
Can I change it?
Let me, there we go, now that is. And it's similar.
I'm hitting the green.
He is. He is.
All of the votes are in, and that motion for a five vote is seven-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, is anyone registered for public address?
No, ma'am, I'm just.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. For deliberation today, we're going to begin with the results of year three of the employee pay study, and Mr. Smith will lead this off.
I want to ask our paying comp guru from PTRC, Matt Reese, to come up. He's got a slideshow here. He wants to go through a little bit of a deck. We do this every year, or we've done this every year for three years. I want to remind the board, this is year three, what we'll call the external market study, part of this pay study. I got some more information about some other things coming up later, and I'll go through that in the bigger piece of paper after Matt gets done, but I'm going to let him walk you through this small deck here.
Thank you.
Good morning. Appreciate your time today. The first one, just to get us all on the same page as far as where we are with the study, started out in twenty-nineteen, and move through the group that you see there, and then we implement in the following fiscal year. So you've had implementations in twenty and twenty-one, and now we're considering the implementation for fiscal year twenty-two. You can see in the year-three groups there, the folks that we studied this year, variety of folks. In year one, we were focused on, you know, your social services and your EMS. Those groups were the big ones to pull through. Sheriff's Department in year two, and then year three is sort of a catch-all, if you will, for all of those other groups, trying to distribute evenly the number of positions that we're studying each year to help with budget management, those kinds of issues. And so then you see the estimated costs for this year's implementation of the three-eighty-seven. Jason's going to talk to you a little bit more about that later on, and the overall total implementation cost of one-point-five that you have. Let me just recap with you the process right quickly, that the real jewel of this study is your employee participation. So all of the employees have participated in this study. They've completed a questionnaire where they say, this is my job, this is the percentage of time I spend doing these tasks, this is how I go about problem solving, these are the physical requirements that are involved. This is what I think the educational attainment and certifications are that are needed to do the work that I'm assigned on a daily basis. That's reviewed by their supervisor, and then management, then that's forwarded to us. We follow up that with an interview to say, hey, is there something we don't understand? Is there something more that we need to glean from this? Is it matching up with our understanding of what this work would be? So it's really a study of work in the organization, and it's a great process for you all to do on a regular basis that you're capturing that data, because this data can be used for a variety of HR purposes down the road. If there's an ADA issue that comes up, if there's a way that you would need to make an accommodation, this can be the grounds for that. If there is an issue with FLSA, things far beyond the scope of this study, that becomes the base of information for you. So really, I can't emphasize that enough, and that's a hard, hard piece of work that all of your employees have engaged in, right? To sit down and fill out a thirteen-page document about what I do every day, you know, describe how I go about riding a bike. So I can't tell you how much that really benefits your organization and the great work that your employees have done on that.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Yes, sir.
What percentage of our employees actually did the survey?
All of your employees are engaged in. Now, they may have participated in one, right? That if we were a unit of income maintenance workers, then I might have engaged with others in that and said, yeah, I think that Steve and I are together on this, and we signed off on it and so forth. But my understanding is that.
And it did over three years.
That's good.
And it tied the organization to basically to a third, a third, and a third. That's good.
Yeah, and I really, I know it seems very perfunctory in the study, but I can't emphasize enough how much of a great standard that it is. Really, if you think about it, those become the de facto job descriptions that you have. You've got this survey that's been completed, you know, roughly once every three years that is saying, this is my job, and this is where things are currently. So that's just a really good practice to have. When we jump into it, this is the lens through which we're looking at, to try to determine what is a classification, what's not a classification, should things hold together, should they be separated out, and we're looking at all of this. I'm not going to run through the whole list, but we look at the granular level, what are the working conditions that are there, and then up to the high level of what kinds of decisions are being made, and what are the consequences of those decisions, right? I mean, I think you had a great example of that this morning, that, you know, you've got folks that are out in life safety roles in your organization, and there's tremendous consequence of error with that. So this morning, I just want to emphasize that we're looking at the structural components of pay is really the emphasis when we start talking about grades and assignment of classes to grades and what is a class. So we're working this lower left-hand quadrant, if you will, of how should the compensation system be designed when we look at what are the considerations of the quality of workforce and the availability of that workforce? The components in the upper right-hand quadrant, those are for management to look at of, you know, what's our budget, how fast can we move things along, for you all to determine as well, what are the individual elements that we need to reward of performance, or what we call individual contributions on that. We leave that to management. Quickly, this is sort of the process, right? There is a structure to this. This is from the American Compensation Association. This just sort of walks you through the process of what we are. So we're trying to use HR best practices as we move through this, and so it's a very deliberate look. It's somewhat of a narrow look, that we're confining our issues to the ones that you've seen in the previous slide for what's the labor market, what are those conditions of work, what are the factors of classification, and then what is this process? Ultimately, what we're trying to do is reconcile two things. What have we seen internally, and what have we seen externally, and how do we pull those two together? So that's what's happening in the lower part of this diagram, and there is objectivity, there is subjectivity that enters into that of trying to determine what is the internal relevance, because it's not just all market factors, it's what are the relationships, how do these classes fit together? And we really want to look at moving occupational groups, not single individuals, but occupational groups of classes is what the goal is with this. Just to remind you about the market, you are very centric to the Piedmont Triad. You can see, this is a graph of where do people in Davidson County work, and so you can see that's fairly centric to the Piedmont Triad, right? I mean, you all probably have one of the most centric Piedmont Triad employment clusters of any organization, right? You're equally in Greensboro and Winston-Salem and High Point and Davidson County as well. So that's really the emphasis of where we are. Those are going to be the market points that we're going to look at as we move forward. How that gets expressed, you see here in this chart of public health nurse. And what you see with public health nurse, to remind you how these charts are set up, is that blue bars represent minimum, and that is the driver of our decision-making. That's a very conservative approach to compensation, but we're looking at what are the minimums to set your grades? And with that, it would be if two public health nurse positions came available on the same day, if Forsyth was recruiting for one and you were recruiting for one, and you both were putting the ad in whatever publication at the same time, how would those be presented? That's kind of the way to look at that. So it's that entry-level minimum compensation that drives our analysis. And then you see the orange stack on that first line for Davidson County, that's the amount we're adjusting to, right? That's our recommendation to move from grade seventy-one to grade seventy-two for public health nurse, too. So what you see with there is we're tying in to the average of that entry-level minimum market there. Now, the gray lines are for us all to be aware of, that that's actual average. If we took all of your public health nurses together, and what would be the average of that salary, that's what you see with the gray line stack. And so then there's two intersecting blue and gray lines. Those are there, so you can kind of have a quick visual reference of where do those averages intersect? What's the average of the actual average, the gray line? What's the average of the decision-maker line, that blue line that you see there? So that's what things look like for public health nurse moving from grade seventy-one to seventy-two. For public health educator, a higher jump here from sixty-two to sixty-five, but again, you see we're tagging in at the minimum line there with that gray adjustment. For our next one, garage mechanic is sixty-four to, sixty to sixty-four. We look at your entry-level class of garage mechanic one. You do not have any incumbents currently, or at the time of the study, you did not have any incumbents at one, so I've also included garage mechanic two, actual average, that you see what we're doing there. And you see, we're moving that whole class series of mechanic one and mechanic two to sixty-four and sixty-seven respectively, and you can see where those tie in both at the entry level of the market and then at the actual average for where we are with that. Onto our heavy equipment operator. Not all classes move, right? If we can determine that we have a class series that doesn't have enough influence either internally or externally to move, then the recommendation is to leave that class where it is, and that's what we have with heavy equipment operator at sixty-three. You can see you're just shy of that average, and if there's not a substantial amount that we need to move, then our recommendation is to leave that where that is. This is data that was collected in the fall of last year, so it is lagging data, that's the way that these processes work. We will continue to look at these issues for you and continue to be aware, but at the time that we made that assessment, that the heavy equipment operator, grade sixty-three, did not need to change. Moving on to a couple of others, we had a variety of classes in this year's study. Tax appraiser one at grade sixty-five did not need to move. You can see where that one lands in terms of its averages with that. But when we get to tax appraiser three at the highest level that you have, when we compare that with the highest level of tax appraisers, and there's a real difference in that kind of work that's being done at sort of a residential level and then what would be done at a mass appraisal and a commercial level at a tax appraiser three, that that does need to adjust to that grade sixty-nine to come in with the average of the entry with that. We were asked to look at telecommunications. There's been a lot of market pressure on telecommunications. You'll remember that telecommunications were part of year-one study originally, but there's been some real market pressure on those positions, and as you know, that's the front line of defense for you with emergency response. So there has been some market movement on that, so our recommendation is to go from sixty-one to sixty-three. That leads this market just slightly with that, or leads the average on this market just slightly, but given all of the things that are going on with market movement right now, I really do think that's the best recommendation to give you. So that is an aggressive placement at sixty-three, but that is probably what you need to do. I think you've seen some signs of difficulty in recruitment and retention in that area. So how do things move? The recommendations are based on these grades, right? Should you be at a grade sixty-three? Should you be at a grade sixty-four? And then the implementation follows that grade structure. So this is your grade structure. As you move from a lower grade to a higher grade, that's a one percent implementation assumption, right? That your base salary will move one percent for one grade, two percent for two grades. Now, if you happen to be below minimum, then you would move to the new minimum of that grade, so there can be a more than a one percent or two percent change for a one grade or two change respectively, because we want to get you on grade with that and get you to the minimum of it. Most of the transitions that we've had have been with the implementation factor of a one percent per grade with that. And so I think that brings us now to talk about costs, and so at this point, I'm going to hand it back over.
I'll take that one real quick, Matt. So let me transfer you over to the two bigger pieces of paper you've got there in front of you. Let me do the smaller one, the three stacks there. So the total cost of this year's portion of the study is just under three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. I want to say what the total cost of all three years now. We had all three years that we have absorbed, and that's a very important thing to understand. Just under, probably around a million and a half, million and four over three years. So I'm extremely proud of you all for taking on this, because I've worked in jurisdictions that have received the quote-unquote "the bill" and cannot implement the study. They have to implement it in a variety of pieces, and by the time they do, it's old, and now they're playing catch-up to the market again. Remember, there's two pieces to this, and Matt, I'm doing this in my language, so you correct me if I'm speaking that way. We've got this external market look, what we compare to some of our competitors, if we will. There is a year-four piece to this I had kind of forgotten about, where we look at internal equity. If you remember, we had this conversation when we did, we adjusted the sheriff deputies not long ago, where we've moved people up to new minimums, but thereby compressing them against folks who are already in those grades. So I think year-four, Matt's going to work with me on getting me a proposal to take a look at that. I kind of was thinking ahead and thinking we were done, and after that, maybe we can take a year off from any type of adjustments and just do our regular colas and come back. But it's the kind of thing, as we keep going, if we do these market studies and don't take so much lag, they don't cost as much. There's not as much to adjust. But I am very proud of, many of you were here, Commissioner Elliott might have been his first year, I'm not sure, but the year we started this, and we weren't sure what the bill was going to be over three years. And here we are, million and a half dollars later, and again, we've absorbed it up under fifty-four cents. I'm very proud of you all. Not very many jurisdictions can say that. So that's the bill for this year's. You've got the detail there by general fund. The breakdown of the total between general fund and other funds, you know, if you're a heavy equipment operator, you're under Charlie's area, which is the landfill, so, and then the individual stuff is on the big piece of paper, but that's all I have for terms of data.
So there's going to be a year-four, a year-four, and then we start all over? Is that?
Year-four, we won't look at our competitors. We'll only look at us.
Yeah, and then after.
And we may take a year off and then come back and maybe start over. We'll have those conversations obviously along the way, and we'll keep, look at this. This is a thing that you got to watch as it moves. Remember, we put funds up for this in county contingency, so it's not like we don't have funds budgeted for this, we do. And if this is something the board wishes to move forward with implementation on, it'll take HR a little while to key through all this stuff, but we already have the funds budgeted and put aside for this.
How about explain that sheet to me a little bit better? I don't know that I understand.
Change amounts are by left-hand side by department, and that's every fund we have in the county. So for example, Davidson Works is its own fund, but animal shelter is in the general fund. As you move to the middle, that's just, that same number broke out, now just general fund and other funds.
Okay, what does that mean down at the bottom, eighty-five percent remaining payroll? What is?
Sorry.
I can answer that. This, if the board approves this, it would go into effect at the first paycheck in September.
It's not a full year, right?
No, it's not a hundred percent year?
Right, right. Because we're already, twenty-six payrolls for a year, we're already three or four in, so.
So you said three-thirty.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at three-eighty-seven.
That's for the full year, the eighty-five percent part we do this year is three-thirty.
All right, all right. That's what I'm leaving in.
As we build next year's budget, we'll incorporate it all, it'll obviously be incorporated all in.
I don't have that thing.
Here?
Yeah, I don't have that. I don't really like digging down deep in positions. I see something, I see we have a support services director and a maintenance director. Are we splitting that department with two directors?
It has been, Dwayne, I think, Dwayne, is that you and, yeah, Alan, it's been a kind of a.
And a manager.
It's been split out for a while.
Maintenance manager, and he's been the director. Okay, but now he's going to be a director. But now he's going to be a director.
If his position says officially, what does it say officially?
Maintenance director.
Director in terms of the same grade levels as Dwayne?
Yeah. But I know by the name it determines the race or the position.
Look at that. I certainly think, you know, what you want to look at is a naming convention. And so if by calling something a director or calling something manager, you may want to be intentional about what level of that is. However, what I will tell you is for our work, that we're going to look at that questionnaire that I described to you, right? And we're going to look at what are the consequences of error that are being made and what are the reporting relationships?
And I don't care, but if I see, if I see his position as director, I see him not answering to Dwayne, he's his own director.
Years ago, Richard was transportation director, and he was under Rex, you know, for a while. The naming convention, we can adjust, but I assure you, the grades are there for Dwayne. The grade above, he is the department head for that.
Because I would think if Dwayne is still over a director and, or over a manager now, now you're over a director, I think you need more than four percent. I mean, I'm just saying that, just for me, because his supervision, rising tide lifts all boats, right? So I just want to ask that. I'm in agreement with it. I'm fine with it. I think it's great. This guy deserves that for what he's done for the county and the money he saved, but I was just asking a technical question. The same thing about, you know... I'm not going any further. We're good.
I'm good with it.
I remember before we put this into effect and started a three-year move, we struggled just about every year with what we're supposed to do with paying.
We were doing it in-house, yeah. It's very hard to do.
And it's a plan, and if you work a plan, then it evens out. It's just a very difficult thing to do. You raise the people at the bottom, you compress it, people at the top, they become nearer the people at the top. So you have to have, you have to have a plan and you have to enforce the plan.
Some of our highest percentages are coming at the very top. So we've got a little bit of equality on both sides.
Remember, the COLAs do the inverse of that, you know? They put, and so what the hope is, that we implement this thing over three years. We're not in bad, as bad a shape in terms of our competition with trying to draw talent. You know, that's really what it's all about. And we do get in areas, we'll talk about in a little while with nine-one-one, or, you know, we had that same conversation with sheriff's deputies. You get into a battle where everybody's struggling in North Carolina or around the country for talent for a variety of areas. That you have to deal with, with maybe a scalpel or a surgical approach. But globally, this is hopefully our way. You can see where these averages are moving to that ninetieth percentile, trying to keep us competitive with some of these things. It's very hard, as you see some of them gray bars for actual pay, much out further in the distance. That one's tough. And, you know, that could be a variety of variables. You could have very tenured folks working in some of those organizations. They've been there a while. So keeping those minimums moving assures you when people do leave out that are tenured, you're back in the game in terms of, because everybody's going to lose tenured folks sooner or later, you know? And you're at least back in the game to compete.
Mr. Smith, has, and it may have happened before me getting on the board, but has Mr. Reese done like a compaction study? Or is that available so we can kind of see where compaction is or...
We haven't not, that's more, that'll be a little bit of the year four thing, because that's kind of addressing that issue.
That's internal.
Yeah. It's internal kind of equity issues. Maybe a little tougher to analyze and digest as this is. This one's a little bit easier, because all you got to do is get your data from your employees and your comps of who you're competing against.
Need a few more minutes to take a look.
Do we put this on for your vote on Tuesday night?
Yes, we, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the year three pay study recommendation.
We don't generally vote on Thursday morning.
No budget thing, so I'll leave it to you all. If you want to implement it now, since HR's got to key all this stuff, any more days that they could have to do it would be greatly appreciated. But there's no budget appropriations, we already have it. We will move stuff out of county contingency into departments as we see issues with them not meeting. Because we don't know now, that's the next spring. I mean, this fall, we're okay. So we've got the funds, we're just looking for the approval to implement.
I would just want to look at some of the incidental things like that, and I wouldn't mind, you know, meeting on a sidebar to talk about some of the issues that I have. Maybe we could look in and see what might change. I don't want to prove this now. And then, like, the first topic, Dwayne's might have to be adjusted a little bit, and, you know, I'd just like to take a look at that. We can approve it with...
It's not going to hurt another three or four days, so just put it out till Tuesday.
So we'll just postpone this to the next Tuesday night.
Do you want it on deliberation or consent?
Deliberation or consent.
Deliberation.
Deliberation. Okay.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, man. Thank you, Mr. Reese, we appreciate it.
Thanks, man.
Presentation is quite understandable, appreciated, making it easy for us to see.
Just one question, sir. If we make changes in individual units on this, it's going to have a ripple effect on the whole thing.
Certainly can, yes, sir. Yes, Mr. McClure, you're exactly right.
I appreciate how you evaluated it all, and the scale that you got there is very reasonable, I think. Now, some of people got thirty-four dollar increase.
That's right.
Some of them got a whole lot more than that, but it was based upon what their responsibilities and thing for it. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Mr. Reese, I do have one as well.
Sure.
When looking at this, are you making, because you looked at other counties as well, are you making recommendations to what grade they are in based on, again, comparable counties? Is that...
Right. Yeah, there's two things that are going on in that chart that was there. You've taken, this is what's going on internally, right? What reporting relationships are, what levels of responsibility are, who's in light classes that once you start moving, say, an income maintenance worker one, then you're going to have to move the two and the three, right? There's these, you are under the guidance of the State Personnel Act for SPA-covered positions. So there's a schema to those grades that has to be maintained for compliance with the state. So really, what we're looking at is, is there enough evidence to move an entire occupational class? And is there enough need to move that entire occupational class? So that, to Mr. McClure's point, that once you start moving something, then there can be this ripple effect, right?
Absolutely.
That you can't move a one without a two, without a three. And so that's what we're looking at, is what's the evidence externally to move that? How far off in those charts are we? And then what's the internal connectability? What's that internal relatedness that, okay, this is the whole series from an entry level worker up to a supervisor, perhaps up to a manager, that's going to have to be moved to maintain that, what we call internal equity? So those are the two things that we're constantly trying to balance, right? Is, okay, if we make, move this much, what is that ripple effect going to be, and how do we balance that out? And we try to go with the deference of saying, look, if there's market issues to do that, then we're going to need to figure out how to put that into place. And so that's part of why we want to look at a minimum comp analysis. That's why we want to look at some of these more modest, one percent, two percent to address things that, that one percent and two percent is addressing the compaction. It's not necessarily fixing it, because you're moving five percent, potentially five percent on the front end, and then one percent, two percent on folks that are in range. So all of that, to summarize, is somewhat the need for next year's work of saying, do we have a compaction problem? Do we have this issue that we need to spend some dollars to move folks out? Years one, two, and three have been about, let's take that market influence, let's take that internal equity, and let's see how best we can address that in revising our assignment of classes to grades. Because that's what you're doing, is you're moving folks in those grade assignments. Now, the continuing work needs to be to be sure that your distribution, you should imagine little dots throughout that range, how well does that need to be distributed?
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I also seen, Mr. Reese, where, you know, your investigation went the other opposite direction.
Absolutely.
With the tax assessor, administrative assistant, collection specialist, it went from a grade sixty-nine to a grade sixty-four. It was forty-five thousand, went to, the proposed amount's thirty-six thousand.
That's right. If we find one of those internal equities that is out of line, right? In some cases, it may be a classification issue, or someone is classified in a role that really doesn't fit, then we will adjust that to, if it's a lower classification, to that lower classification. Then if there is one of these where there's an internal equity that's so out of line that's going to just continue to be a burr that needs to be sanded out, then that's what we're going to do.
That's refreshing.
And that's in year four?
Yes. No, that was in, those actually, those adjustments for grade assignment were in this year's. In year four, it's really to Commissioner Shore's question of distribution and compaction and looking at those issues.
Last question. And I'm just playing catch-up here a little bit, but on the surveys you sent out, I'm assuming you send me one, I'm a maintenance, you know, lawn keeper or something, you know, this is what I do, this is, you know, my responsibilities, da-da-da-da-da. These are the kinds of surveys you're sending out, and you're taking that, again, and comparing it to what other groundskeepers across other counties and so forth and so on?
That's right. We have the advantage and great privilege of working with folks throughout the Piedmont triad and throughout North Carolina. So we're taking our understanding of what are those jobs and what's the data that we're collecting from other studies. And then for folks that we have not done a study for recently, or that we've never perhaps done a study for, say, like a city of Charlotte or a Mecklenburg County, then we would reach out to their human resources staff and be sure that our comparables are right, that this position that you have that does this, is that the same thing as what we're seeing over here with this benchmark class? And they would affirm that for us.
Did your firm list all the questions, or is it left up to me to put what I do and my responsibilities?
We have a variety of them. We have some that are what we refer to as licorice, you know, on a scale. Do you affirm this, or do you really disaffirm this kind of thing? And then we have a variety that are open-ended, that just, you know, here's the question, what decisions do you make, right? And so you're going to tell me about your decisions, and then it may be that I give you another question that asks, of those decisions do you make, is it more like this or is it more like that? And so we try to come at that from a couple of different angles, and then we validate all of that by coming back with an interview. And from the interview, we're going to interview at least, at least, one person from every occupational area. So what I mean by that is if we're talking about a sheriff's deputy, and you've got vice and narcotics, you've got patrol, you've got property investigations, even though they're all in the same class, we're going to interview someone out of each of those occupational areas so that we've got a good look at it. If you're the only person that does the work in your organization that does that single occupant class, then you get interviewed.
So you guys have the ability to weed out, Commissioner Elliott's a groundskeeper also, and, you know, he's got three pages worth of stuff that he does, and I, you know, I'm like, well, this is just my job, and I've got five things. Y'all weed that out so that it's balanced.
Absolutely. And we get that a lot, that there's someone who's just, is more of a writer, is more of a describer, and so they're going to write a whole lot. And there's going to be another person who's going to, you know, say, I patrol the county roads a hundred percent of my time, right? And both of those are accurate, but, you know, there's detail behind both of them. And so what we do in that process is that it is most likely that we're going to interview the person who's going to write the most detail, because we're assuming they're going to give us the most detail and so forth. You know, sometimes when you interview someone who says, I patrol a hundred percent of the time, it's hard to pull details out of that person even in an interview. What we will then do is go back at each level of management, both at, say, like the immediate level, say, a sergeant, and then both at a division captain, and say, our take on this is that all of these folks are doing the same thing, or our take on this is that James is doing something different than Chris. Can you affirm that for me? And so we'll do that with management up the chain as well, to have their input on it. So our process is very collaborative and deliberative in that communication.
Thank you.
So when was this study completed?
We interviewed, I believe through December of twenty. I don't believe we were doing interviews until twenty-one. Were we doing interviews in twenty-one? Interviews, when did our interviews wrap up? In December?
Probably in January.
January.
Yeah.
And then the data collection starts like right now, in August, we've started our data collection. Data collection and that analysis will not probably be completed until December. Both the school of government and the league send out their data that we use to validate and confirm what we're looking at, and then we'll look at our own set of data. So data collection happens in the fall, if you will. The interviewing can lead really into early spring.
What I'm referring to is this document that's before us today. When was this done and completed, ready to be passed on to the commissioners?
This part, oh, the PowerPoint piece?
Yeah, this piece here.
The data part. We were ready for this, it's been compiled and showed to me probably, what, in April, May?
Yeah. I was...
This doesn't fall on you, but, you know, it'd be nice, Casey, in the future, if we receive this document before the meeting and then are expected to make a decision on it that day, so that we can review it and...
One hundred percent.
And any questions like any of the board members may have, we can be prepared to ask. I mean, it'd take a while to go through all this and look at all this data, and then we're going to look at these pages and make a decision on it, and we don't know half what's on there, so we haven't received it. It's not on you.
No, that's a good point.
But I think we need to have this stuff.
I'll take some of that responsibility as well.
Instead of making instant decisions that day, you know, something we don't even know.
Absolutely.
Well, we can have a work session on it, because we got off-cycle with it. You know, you want to look at it in May to start, I mean, in April to start to figure out if, let me back up. If we, in a lot of jurisdictions, you want to look at it in April, so you want to see if you can put the money in the budget that you're building that year, if you can even do it. We're fortunate in the fact that, I don't know how to, mentally, we're so far ahead in terms of our finances, thinking about, we're already thinking about four and five years from now. We already kind of know, if the pay study doesn't exceed X amount, we're okay. You know what I mean? And so that's, but maybe we could do a work session in the spring and show you what we got, but we know unless we've got a problem, we're good with the budget, we're rolling on, you know? We got off-cycle a little bit into August for that reason. And because the first two years got on August, I just decided to leave it on August.
It's very interesting, very interesting statistics there. I like to really look at, you know, really look over, but I think that's another good reason, that's good to do, Dave, just look at it.
Again, work with your schedule, but let me just emphasize to you that you really are, the comments that Casey made to you, you are really in a very strong position, that I'm not bringing to a recommendation where you're lagging the market by twenty percent, fifteen percent, and you're having to look at that, right? That is a really good piece of news. And then really where we are with Davidson County, which is where you want to stay, is you're in this routine maintenance, right? What we're talking about is you're taking your compensation system in for a tune-up, right? You're getting an oil change. It's not particularly exciting, but it is very necessary. And staying on that, getting, you know, this is when we want to see the data and how we want to consider it and so forth, getting that into that regular pattern of preventative, kind of boring, routine maintenance is crucial, right? Just like any other system that you got, whether it's air conditioning or your car, you want to get into that routine maintenance. And that way, the costs aren't really prohibitive when you look at them, they're budgeted. And that way, the costs aren't really prohibitive, when you look at them, they're budgeted, and so kudos to management, kudos to you all for staying on top of this issue and not getting, because there's so many places that I go and present this information, and I'm like, yeah, you all are in a hole, and you're gonna have to dig yourselves out, and it's expensive and painful, and it's disruptive to compression, because when you're having to move that, you've got even more severe compression, if we're talking about moving multiple grades and that kinda stuff throughout your whole system. So really, kudos to you all for staying on top of it.
And, and you dig yourself in such a big hole, sometimes it becomes almost impossible to kill it to standards, so.
Absolutely.
Because you can't afford it, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but I, I agree, I agree, I think that we've done a pretty good job.
They don't realize there's that last piece that Commissioner Shore's just brought up, they go through the market, and they think that's the adjustments, and then they forget about the, oh, we've moved all these people up to minimum, and there's a whole batch of people still sitting on that pay grade, that, you know, it really hadn't spread off of them, and so that comes as a big shock, and then there's, in a lot of jurisdictions, but again, we're a little bit different. Um, as you all, I hope are well aware, we go through this every year at the retreat. We are in a better financial spot, so we don't feel that crunch come these things pressing up on us to say, not only do we get the bill, but where, how are we gonna do this? How are we even, it's a penny on the tower, in some jurisdictions, it's a tax increase to go back to the citizens to say, to come pay employees, which as you know, it's, politically, sometimes that's a very challenging thing to do. So we are not in that position, thank goodness, um, and I can't stress that enough, because that's very important. I can take you to jurisdictions all across North Carolina that receive this exact same presentation, and look at each other in the same setting, and go, how, we have no idea how we're going to do this. And it's very, very tough conversation, so anyway, kudos to you all for looking past year one, year two down the road.
Okay, we'll call on Mr. Martin now to lead us off about rescue squad updates, and these, this is for information only.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, we've had a, a little bit of confusion back in July. Our folks from the rescue squads did wanna come and speak before the board, uh, and there was some confusion with the public comment versus the agenda, so it just felt like it would be best to give them a spot on the agenda and let them provide some updates to the board, so with that, I'll turn it over to our folks from the rescue squad.
Okay, I'm, I am Bobby Goins, Rusty Goins, everybody knows me. As, uh, I'm the chairman of the board for the Thomasville Rescue Squad. This is Derek Markham is my name, some of you know me, most of you probably don't. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you this morning. Uh, a little, a little background on myself, as most of you don't know me, uh, been in community service basically all my adult life, started off in the Marine Corps at a very young age, seventeen. And, uh, since then, has, I've basically, if it has a red light or siren or a blue light on it, I've driven it. Been in law enforcement, rescue squad, volunteer fire, the whole nine yards. Up until about fifteen years ago, when I decided to go private sector. Uh, however, I do still provide service to the community with the rescue squad.
And I, you guys, I'll throw my little bit of background, I started off from, uh, actually while I was in high school, started volunteering with, uh, fire and, and rescue, went out of high school, went in the military, was a combat medic in the military. Came out, got a little, got a little bit away from it for a little while, when we moved to Wilmington. Come back up here, and they'll send you blood, it's in your blood. And something I've always been, a lot of people told me, you know, if you'd been paid for all your volunteer hours, you'd be rich, but, ah, it's better to be rich inside than it is in the pocket. But one of our big concerns is the amount of funds that we got to work with. Uh, we're out here busting our butt, pretty much, to try to keep the people safe and, uh, save lives. It's like the gentleman before, uh, that's a great thing he did, but that's, that's our everyday, you know, we do it every day. We're having to do it right now on such small budgets, that we're digging in our pocket to keep fuel in the trucks. We're not like fire, who, the fire departments, I mean, I'm not, they're great, they do a great job. One advantage they've got to us, they've got the little, the tax money, when you get your property taxed, you know, they get a portion of that. We get nothing. What little bit you guys give us, and what little bit the city of Thomasville gives us, basically is less than, we get less than fifty thousand dollars a year for the Thomasville Rescue Squad. You can imagine trying to keep trucks on the road with fuel prices, and that, all the PPE that we've had this year, how do you do that, right? We've had to balance it before, I know we've, we operate in the red a whole lot, okay? We operate in red because we don't have, we, we're gonna, everybody's heart's in it, we're gonna do it, whatever it takes to do it. We operate in the red because we, we don't have the money to operate. So it's, it's in the red because we're putting our money out of our own pockets into it. Like the, one example is the, uh, the, uh, COVID clinics. You know, we were asked to help out, do medical standbys when they had the COVID clinics. I know myself put in, uh, Commissioner Elliott, I think we gave him a paper, uh, back in June or July, that told how many hours, how many man-hours that we put into that, just that project. And it was seven, what, seven hundred hours or a little bit more? That's hours that we provided free of charge, you know? And when I say free of, free of charge to you guys, but it did cost us some, you know, running the trucks, our insurance. We paid just our, uh, uh, work as comp insurance, five, right at five thousand dollars for the year. And that, that's fresh on my mind, we just wrote the check last week. Little stuff like that, it's, we're operating, that's why, why, why we're operating in the red, when we get fifty thousand dollars, we've got building expenses, we get, uh, you know, our power, water, everything that we get, nothing is provided free. We pay for it just like every, every other business. Although our service is all free, we get no income at all from the service that we provide. There's no bill to anybody. And people, most people, when, when they hear that, they can't believe it, like, why? You know, how do you guys do it? And we do it, because we love it. But that's, you know, that's some of the obstacles that we have. One big obstacle we're having right now, you know, the, the county is looking at changing over to the new radio system. When that happens, we're basically dead in the water. We have no way to communicate, other than cell phones. Right now, most of our radio equipment that we've got, uh, the squad does have, I think, was it five, six? Five radios, portable handheld radio system. Thomas Rescue Squad has five. Now, as a whole squad, you'll see some, some of us have them, the one I have in the chair back there, it came out of my pocket. Those radios are not cheap, that's just one thing. The equipment that we use, uh, example, when we have a vehicle extrication, where we, we're cutting cars, and we're digging people out of a crushed vehicle, basically. And it, it happens not with just vehicles, say there's a, a building collapse, like they had in Florida. Anything like that happens. The, the gear that we do, that we have now to protect ourselves, is gear that another fire department has thrown away. That's what we're actually putting on us to protect us. And it's, it's tough. It's hard for us to recruit, we try to, we try to answer as many calls as completely, as possible. When you're volunteer, you know, people have other jobs, they've gotta do, they can't, they're not gonna make every call. It's just, volunteer's not gonna do it. I'm gonna say for last month in July, our, the Thomasville Rescue Squad answered over two hu- over a hundred and twenty-five calls, just in one month. So we try to be there as much, and that's just, just our Thomasville area, that's not the whole county. They've got a, a bigger footprint than Davidson County does. That's just us, was a hun- over a hundred and twenty-five calls. And can you imagine the fuel price? Because some of those trucks, you know, they're big trucks, they take a lot of fuel.
I hate to, I hate to.
We keep those trucks running out of our own pocket.
This is real quick, I hate to cut you off, but Chuck, is, is there a way that counties can, uh, fund, uh, rescue squads with tax revenue like they do the fire departments, is that even, is that a thing?
When, when you say the fire departments, there's not a procedure.
The volunteer fire departments?
Yes, sir, there's, there's procedure in the general statutes that applies specifically for a fire tax, and there's not a, a program similar to that, analogous to that.
So that would have to be a bill?
Now, the manager, I think, is speaking about, do you wanna speak to that?
Tim may need you up here, because I believe we dug into this.
And there's a special services district or something, Casey?
I believe you can do an overlay district, what's, same thing? Okay. Uh, you could, and as your question, you basically could apply a tax, that they would, I don't know what kinda, now, I don't have to check in the statutes to see how much administrative procedure would have to be set up in terms of a board and the functionality of that, but it is possible, I think. Don't quote me on this, I don't have a statute right in front of me, but I believe we looked at.
Is that a separate tax, or is that part of the?
It would be, it would, it would be just, it would be, uh, basically like a fire district tax, operating the same manner, governed by them through a, um, as the same thing, a board. And it, but I, in the statute, what I don't know off the top of my head is the thresholds, does it cap it at a certain amount? Those kinds of things.
Could, could we, uh, could we get y'all to look into that and maybe report back to us at some point?
I think, Tim, Tim, do you remember all this stuff off the top of your head, I mean, was there some?
Not all of it, but for this particular tax, it's actually the rate set by the commissioners.
Not by the board, okay.
Right.
Okay.
But you all tend to, based on the statute, and I need to go back and look at it, um, because I do not recall off the top of my head, that you all connect to the, the service areas too. So it's not very lengthy, I'll be happy to pull that information, revisit it, and pass it on to everyone.
To mention this, Tim, is that not something that would be subject to a, a public hearing, and possibly even, uh, a ballot?
It's a pretty lengthy process, um, I can't remember the timeline, I would, I would like to, it's been, uh, probably a couple months since I looked at it, so, um, but yes, there is a public, uh, hearing, it can take up to six months to kinda get all those information. So it'd be something that we would probably wanna look at now, if it was something that was adopted with state.
To put on the twenty-twenty-two ballot, to have everybody vote on? I don't know that it requires a vote of the people. It may require a vote of this board, it does require a vote of this board, yeah.
But there would have to be a public hearing, and, so we could hear what people wanted to do in the county and so forth?
That's right, yes, sir, I can get all that information compiled, get it out to y'all today. Summarize it, but you do a statute influence.
Either way, it's, it's, it's coming out of tax dollars, whether we fund it, or whether there's a tax on it, or whatever, it's, it's coming out of the citizen's pocket, so, uh, you know, but I know y'all struggling. And, uh, you know, just he- hearing the story, y'all need support, so.
And that's, that's wonderful, but right, honestly, right now, what we would like to get is maybe like a shot in the arm to bring us up to a little more safer level. Like I, I mentioned radios, our trucks, the radio, the truck we've got out here now, the radio that's mounted in the truck is basically no good. It does not work on the current system that you guys have got, it's the older system.
Analog system?
Oh, analog system, it is.
I gotta quit, do y'all write, uh, grants, do y'all get any kinda grant money for?
Right.
Is there any kinda services we could br- provide as the county with internal staff to help them, you know, for grants, or, I don't know?
There again, the grant, unless you can get somebody to do it for free. Grant writers, or we don't have the money to pay them. Priority is keeping trucks on the road.
You know, having staff members help out and, and do stuff like that for grants, and then we get money's a whole lot cheaper than us putting it on a tax docket and having, you know? I think any way we could help, uh, we can look at, I thought we, what did we give y'all this year? Was it, uh?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand, the year before that, or, I thought we gave them like fifty-something, uh.
Thomasville got, I think.
Davidson County Rescue Squad.
Davidson County got fifty.
Yeah, I think the Davis, the county side's the fifty.
I think, uh, one of the, one of the problems, just to build on what he's already spoken about, is the COVID relief package that happened several months back. I was here during a commissioner's meeting a few weeks back, and I heard the sum of money that was brought into the county from the federal government to support essential workers, basically, and that is the rescue squad, but, you know, the, the essential workers, we all know who those are. Uh, Davidson County Emergency Services got a huge chunk of that money, and they spent it quite wisely. The QRV vehicles have been a huge success during this COVID pandemic problem. The morgue, I'm not sure, but I'm sure it's come in handy that they built. Uh, some other equipment that was put on the trucks is very, 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 uh, well-spent, but we didn't see any of that. It was like a cutoff. Davidson County Emergency Services, including, you know, the sheriff's office and EMS, they did good. We did, we got nothing, zero, not a penny. We were purchasing our own, we had to, uh, purchase extra PPE, gloves, you know, hazmat suits, all this kinda stuff. We bought that with the money that we had in the bank. Our level of service never diminished, not even a little bit. Now, the, the nine-one-one decided to not dispatch us on certain calls due to the COVID thing, but a- as far as responding on wrecks and different, you know, cardiac arrests and stuff like that, we were always dispatched on that. In fact, City Lexington Fire was told not to respond on minor car wrecks. One of the things that City Fire does on a car wreck is clean up, they put the oil dry on the street. We went and purchased oil dry and brooms to put on our wreck truck, because we knew that the fire department wasn't gonna be there any longer to do that. They got COVID relief money, we got nothing. I, I don't understand.
Fire department, City of Lexington?
Yes, sir.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about a five-oh C, a five-oh-one C-three compared to, 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 to government?
Yes.
So there, there's a big difference there.
Okay.
If I'm, am I right or wrong?
I mean, in terms of two different organizations, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, allocations can be made to private five-oh-one C-threes?
Um, with the COVID funds? I think I asked that question, I was told no. That, that, the funding couldn't go to the five-oh-one C-three, so Steve's right. Jason's, uh, probably the one that's looking at, now, you know, remember you got two different COVID fundings, the ones that's coming now, and the older stuff, is the older stuff allowed to be transferred?
The rules are a little different between the two, so.
Were they qualified for the grants, Jason, for the PP, um, equipment, PPE?
Yeah, absolutely. It was, uh, it was open for businesses, so, yeah, we could.
It was for nonprofits as well, right?
So did y'all apply for a grant for, um?
We don't, we don't have the staff, we don't have full-time people.
So this, this was through us, I mean, this was through county, it's pretty simple, like a one-cheat piece of paper, I think.
Uh, in, in the tax base, I know, I was in the, I've been in the rescue squad for a little over twenty years, and about twenty years ago at some point, I don't know the exact timeframe, but we visited this well over twenty years ago, and we looked at one-half of one penny of the current fire tax for the districts we serve. That would've given us a half a million dollar a year budget, one-half of one penny. This was twenty years ago. And, uh, as soon as it was brought up officially, every volunteer fire department in the county, uh, said, you know, they, they basically were, no way, not gonna happen, we'll buy our own rescue tool. So a lot of them did that, they cleaned out a spot on their engine, they bought thirty thousand dollars worth of hydraulic tools, threw it on the fire truck, and now they're rescue. Well, they're a fire department, they're not rescue-rated. We could go out here on our rescue squad truck, put a fire pump on it, and start putting water on house fires. That doesn't make us a fire department, okay? The tax, the, the tax base never happened back then, I'm not sure of the laws and the legis, all that kinda stuff there, but in order for us to be relevant today, we need to get a tax base or something, we need to get a, a steady flow of, of income in order to bring our squads up to the current level. The volunteer fire departments and the city fire departments have tools that are out, outdated our tools by twenty years. We're in the dark ages, and we're scraping by with trucks that are fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, that are in the shop getting repaired all the time, we can't keep up. And that's, that is causing a secondary problem in personnel. When you get these, we need young blood in the rescue squad, and we're having a very hard time, everybody is. As far as retaining and bringing in volunteers today is difficult at best. We're competing for volunteers with the fire departments, and now, nothing wrong with the fire departments, I was one for a long time, volunteer fireman, I appreciate what they do, and we're brothers in arms in the same, in the, in the same business. But, but we're basically in competition to get this young, motivated person to volunteer. It's very difficult at best these days. They can go to the fire department, they get, you know, the gear and equipment they're issued is brand-new, top-of-the-line stuff. We've got old stuff, they've got shiny red trucks, we've got old white and green trucks. They've got brand-new, high-technology electric rescue tools, which, by the way, if they don't know how to use them, they don't work that well, as the City of Lexington can probably tell you about, they, they're a brand-new tool that's just been basically destroyed. It's hard to get people to our rescue squad to volunteer, where they can go across the street to the volunteer fire department and, and have the best, most latest equipment, that's what I'm getting at.
I got a question for you, and I, and I hear what you're saying, and I, I support rescue squads. Uh, I just, I think y'all are heroes too, but do y'all operate in the municipality jurisdictions?
Yes.
Have y'all asked the City of Lexington and City of Thomasville for funding too?
I'm not on the board and I'm not a money guy.
I know, but a lot of times the county gets caught with funding everything and y'all, you know, they, they got a kitty into this too. And uh, and you know, Thomasville does, how much does Thomasville give y'all?
This year, we're supposed to get pretty much about the same thing that you guys get.
Okay.
Right in the low twenties.
Okay, so um, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, we shouldn't give anything or whatever like this, but competition is hard to get young people in there and.
I've got a quick question for Davison County and then Don, you want to go ahead first?
I, I just wanted to ask one question. And, and I was listening to you with a lot of interest there of what you're saying. What do you do different from what the fire departments do?
Well, the rescue squad, people in the rescue squad are medically trained, so we basically run every call that the EMS ambulance runs. We're running uh everything from breathing problem calls, CPR calls. Our bread and butter for Davison Rescue and Thomasville is water. We have boats, we do water rescue, we do body recoveries on the lake, if I, you know, and, and what's happening is and of course uh auto vehicle accidents, MVAs, we do, that's our, our bread and butter, basically that and the lake work, wa- river, uh Yakon River work. And what we're having is, is the volunteer fire departments, and like I said, I love them, uh they're starting to kind of duplicate our service, basically, if you will. So instead of us going to uh the Yakon River with a boat, we've got two fire departments showing up with a boat, you know, and, and why they're spending their money on this, I don't really understand. But um our equipment is, is uh, is not up to speed with the new stuff that's being purchased by the fire departments.
So what's, what's the answer?
Well, we, we're medically based, they're fire-based.
I mean, don't, they do medical too though, don't they?
They, they, they're, they're trying to get into that right now as we speak, they're, they're looking at providing uh first responders to run medical calls. If, if that's, if that's the way the county wants to go, then the rescue squads need to go ahead and close the doors.
Understand.
Yeah.
But so, so they really is the county the same services?
Sure.
And, and when he mentioned boats with water, uh with Thomasville Rescue Squad, currently our boat that belongs to the squad is inoperable. It's basically, it's old, it's coming apart, it's coming apart at the seams, literally. Uh the, the current boat that we operate belongs to me. It's my personal boat. That I pretty much will lease to the squad for a dollar a year and I turn around and give it back. But that's, you know, that belong, this is, it's a boat that is personally mine. Uh all the maintenance to that boat. I don't, I don't, don't even use it, you know, for, for my purpose, it stays at the squad building, I know James can vouch for that. And it's all, you know, that's, that's us.
When, when the COVID vaccine clinics rolled out in the county, the rescue squads were asked to assist with that, we were there. Thomasville was there every day at the college during these rescue, during these vaccine clinics, we were there uh doing the monitoring station after the vaccine was given, thirty minutes monitor, monitoring the, the people for any kind of medical emergencies. We, we were the only people at the college and at these schools where we were doing these vaccine programs that were not being uh paid for that service. Uh we even had uh paramedics that worked for the county that were being paid to be there as well. But the rescue squad, we're always asked and we're always called upon, but when it comes to finances, we seem to be kind of forgotten about as with, you know, the COVID relief money.
Let me just make, make, make one statement about that and I want you to take this the right way, okay? But we had funds.
Mm-hmm.
It's your responsibility to apply for those funds and you didn't do it.
Okay.
And now you want to say the county's not funding you, well, there were funds there, all you had to do was go after those funds.
Okay.
There's got to be somebody within the depart- your departments that knows how to go after these funds. Because you're missing the boat on a lot of money.
Yeah. As a volunteer, I've got, I've got a job, I've got a business, I go out, I work out of country.
I understand, I, I do, I work with fire, I work with rescue squad for many, many, all the way back in the seventies, I noted what you guys do.
Yeah.
It's commendable, a lot, most people don't see it.
Right.
But as far as funding, you've got to be in a position that when the money's there, go get it, you know? You can't just not pay attention to it and then later say, well, you ain't got no money. Well, you had a hundred thousand dollars right here, you could have got it, but nobody went after it.
Right.
And, and uh, and we do a lot of things wrong up here, you know, but we're human beings just like you guys are, but we do a lot of things right, like you guys do. But there's got to be a, a tool in place to be, somebody's got to know how to go after these funds. Then you know exactly how much money you're going to need.
Right.
Um so I mean, that would be, just be a suggestion for me that, that you've got to find somebody, even if it's one person that works both, both rescue squads. Somebody that will go after these funds and know how to do it, because as Jason just said a while ago, the money was there, nobody came to get it, right?
And uh Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I got one quick question before I get it and then you said something a while ago that kind of made me cringe a little bit and when I hear rescue squad and I go way back with some of the people in the rescue squad, rescue to me is rescue, you know? So I heard you say a while ago that the City of Lexington or somebody, y'all going out and sweeping the streets, that's not rescue to me.
You're right.
You know, so you're wasting some of your funds. I'd tell them to get a broom and clean up their own road or the DOT or somebody, I mean. Uh so whatever funds you have, the county bothers me that they're getting wasted.
We, we considered that at the time the decision was made that as, as a service to the community, if it was going to be depleted because of whatever reason, if we could spend a hundred dollars on oil dry in a broom and go out there and pick up that slack, then that would be just one more service that we're providing, yes, rescue is the thing.
You know, I, I want to see you dragging the leg, I want to see you cutting the car open, that's rescue to me, but when you got your guys out there sweeping the ground, they got city employees that can do that, we got DOT employees that can do that, that's, that's a waste of your money there.
Yes, and now that's not happening.
Well, and you, but you, you also know, once they find that that you'll do it, they won't do it.
Oh yeah.
That is a good point.
I'd throw my brooms away too if I had uh somebody to sweep up for me, so.
Yeah, but there's still the issue with like our PPE to protect us when we're out there. Uh and when this, when the county does finally make that transition over to the new radio system, we're, we've got no way to communicate.
I thought we'd already made the transition.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Been there for.
Couple of years now, so.
But the written, that's like I say, the radio equipment we've got is personal radio.
You can listen, you can't talk.
Right, we can hear it, but you can't.
You know, when we talked to the rescue squads a, a year, year and a half ago and I'm trying to remember also, we talked about these same problems and even discussed, and I believe you were on the rescue squad then, uh Mr. Shores?
I haven't been a member of the rescue squad in a couple of years, but.
Well, it's been a couple of years then, I guess. But we even discussed with y'all, oh, why don't you merge in and try to save some of that money, having to pay so much uh in, insurance on something and, and try to merge in because you're right, it's almost a thing of the past. And we've got two rescue squads here from one and see if, if you can, can make it that a way some way. Uh maybe it's not enough, maybe not enough to do for two rescue squads. And you're right, uh what, because I was listening, a, a fire department does the same thing that you do. And if I, if, if, if these fire departments now are getting this good shiny new equipment, as you said, and they're getting it, let them do it then. Why, why use your money out of your own pocket? You know, that's, that's, I just, I don't understand that.
Madam Chair, if I may, um gentleman, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been two or three years since I've been a, a part of the squad, but uh when the grant for the radios came about, the rescue squads, if I'm not by the mistake and Derek, I know you were there, um were they not left out of that grant?
Yeah, yes.
Uh they were not allowed, the rescue squad, neither rescue squad was allowed to be part of the grant that bought the radio equipment.
For the county fire department?
For the county fire departments, is that correct? Um I also know that a, a lot of the fire departments are, are combination departments and what that means is that even the volunteer departments pay the volunteers um X number of dollars for going on calls. At the end of the year, uh they tally up how many calls they've been on. I, I don't know numbers, but they pay them five or ten dollars for every call they've went on. The, the rescue squads are not able to do that because again, they don't, they don't get that same type funding. Um I understand both sides of this, uh I, I, I'm on both sides or have been at this point on both sides of it. Um I know that Tom, uh Davidson Rescue was at the first several of the COVID clinics, I know Thomasville has been to all of them, is that correct, uh that they've had a truck there? Um I, I don't know what the answer is. I would like to see uh, I would like to see us do something to help the squads if, you know, maybe if Tim can, when Tim brings us that information, maybe we could, you know, look at that, I, I don't want to put the burden back on the citizens anymore than anybody else does. They also provide a service to the citizens that a lot of other agencies do not, so. I'd like to see us help them in some way.
It's always been a, always been a, a kind of a, on a discussion that we've had, it's a fire departments and rescue squad duplicate. And you made the statement that if the fire departments continue to put rescue stuff on their trucks, you might as well close the doors. And that brings up an interesting point, how do you stop that? Because we don't have control over what the fire department buy. I mean, they have a board and they have a tax thing and for the most part, that's, that's our control that we have, we don't have any other. So the money's going to the fire departments, the fire departments are increasingly going to be rescue and the, and the duplication is going to be more and more, not less and less.
Sure.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is. Um I don't think we have any um power jurisdiction for the fire departments at all. So we can't say you have to, you have to get a broom and dustpan cleaning stuff up.
Yeah, other than certification, is, is a fire department certified to actually provide patient care during a rescue scenario? That's, that's the only kind of jurisdiction you'd have to say, you know, fire department A, uh do they have the qualifications and the jur- and the, and the the ability certified to, to do that kind of work out on the streets, which may be a liable, a liability issue for the county.
That's a big difference we have, is our training. And they, the fire departments are going out and buying these shiny new tools and these toys to play with, but you can play with them, but knowing how to properly use them, that's where the rescue squad comes in.
And I think that.
Properly use them, I know I've been on multiple calls with uh fire departments, I'm not going to name any name, but had I not been there, patient care would have been a lot worse. Uh they would have actually done damage to the patient by the way they were using their tools. There's a lot of training, there's a lot of, and it's year, it takes, it's something you're not going to learn in a, in a week. It's a lot of training to use that equipment. I mean, they're, what they're doing is they, they, because they've got the money and I'm, I'm in a rescue, I'm in a fire department also. And I know come the end of the year, a lot of times they're squirming to be able to spend what money they have. And that's what they're doing, they're, well, we, we've got this extra money, what we're going to do with it, we will do this.
Gentlemen, I will, I will tell you, I think that uh, you know, uh the, the power of the board rests, uh you know, the, the biggest part of us helping you is with issues in Raleigh with making sure when these funds are passed down that you're in the conversation. Uh that's the number one thing, that's out of our hands, is we get, we get told specific directions of how to issue funding and y'all aren't even named in a party that can receive it. So that would be the first thing to do and I have no problem reaching out to Mike Causey, I'm sitting here, I'm looking at the document right now. The North Carolina Department of Insurance Office of State Fire Marshal, Mike Causey, who is the state fire marshal, has a rescue squad workers relief fund. And that workers relief fund has millions of dollars in it and it's there just for your organizations. But you have to get out there and put the money forth to it. It's uh North Carolina General Statute fifty-eight dash eighty-eight dash one dash thirty. The funding is twelve cents a vehicle inspection sticker, so off uh every vehicle inspection sticker paid for in the, in the state of North Carolina, they put money towards the side just for rescue squads. So if you need help getting in touch with Mike Causey, if you need help filing for a grant, that's something that we can do for y'all. And then we can also get with our local legislators to make sure that if stuff comes down in the future, you're just in the conversation. Because uh that's what you need.
We have talked to Mr. Causey.
Okay.
About that.
Yeah.
And uh that rescue squad relief fund is basically there to assist rescue squad members and families in case there is a traumatic or, or significant death, line of duty death, injuries on the job, that kind of thing. It's, it's not really meant for operating budgets.
Well, that's something else we can do, we can talk about changing that whole demographic because guess what, there's not going to be any rescue squads around.
Yeah.
If, if things don't change, so that's something we can advocate for you for.
And Madam Chair, if I, if I may, just to kind of come back into the discussion about the coronavirus relief funds and the American Rescue Plan funds. Under both, the, the ability to non, to give something to a nonprofit is there, but I need to redirect to, it's specific to COVID. So if it's COVID, what we're talking about is strip apart two separate issues. One is being able to provide PPE and things like that for COVID response. And one, we're talking about solvency is really what we're talking about. Um whether or not there's adequate funding in general. Um you know, to the point of what we did with the EMS, you know, purchasing the QRV, that was specific to respond to COVID calls. Um the Lucas devices was to be able to do hands-free compressions to prevent our folks from getting near somebody that had COVID, to minimize those impacts. Those were all tied directly to COVID. So in order for that to happen, even under the American Rescue Plan, we're still talking about that. And it's, at least initially looked like there was going to be a lot of flexibility, but it's very, it's still focused on the pandemic. Unless we're talking about negative economic impacts due to downturns in the economy, things like that. So I, I'd, I'm probably out of line, but I do want to say, strip those two things apart, I mean, we're talking in general, the rescue squads are saying they don't have enough money, is basically what it's coming down to.
But.
But the other point.
I will tell you this, as they respond to calls, every call that they step out, they have to treat like it's a COVID patient. So I could see where you could tie some things to it, but I, I see what you're saying.
But I'm, I'm just trying to pro- provide clarification there. The other um whether or not, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Elliot, for that one though, I think Rob can attest to this, which he comes up later. I believe nine-one-one dispatches those COVID calls specifically, so for the Lucas machine, we were able to send the federal government, like, here's a proof of every call, you know what I mean, it wasn't in general, you know, I just want you to understand.
Yeah.
We were able to prove to the feds, because they started to get very serious about that very quick, that how do you?
How do you know who has COVID and who doesn't?
So we, we proved it.
You know, so every call would be COVID, I know you have a screening process, but not for a peonion, not for an accident. Not for anything like that and that, that's where y'all respond. So it's one thing knowing that we've got a COVID positive patient that we've got inside of a house that's going to that, but you don't have time to do that screening for a car wreck. And these people are doing that, so I would, I would have uh argued with the state, you know, there's no way to prove that. It's just like saying no accidents happen, you have an engine blow up, how did, how could you tell the engine was going to blow up?
Well, what I'm saying is that we don't really get in an argument with them, they just tell us this is the rule and that.
Oh, I got it, I do the same thing for Rockingham County.
It's not really a two-way conversation. It's uh, here's the rule and you're going to deal with it.
I get it, you can.
And, and Tim, and just also, Tim did email out information regarding the special district, you know, how to set that up. Um and, and that's one thing, that would be, at least my quick looking at it, that's a, a, you know, a tax basically on top of or establishing a piece of the existing tax, so.
We, do we have any other questions?
One other one.
One more question.
And I apologize, y'all was asked to go work the COVID clinic, uh and nobody probably discussed pay with you before, I mean, I hear seven hundred hours, I mean, that's a lot to volunteer somewhere, so uh it would be my re- recommendations in the future. When somebody asks you to do something like that, that we probably need to get with the county manager, if, you know, and I get it, it costs you money, you had manpower there. But, and I appreciate you going to do it. You had manpower there, but and I appreciate you going to do it out of goodness of your heart. But on the other side of that, you gotta say, well, wait a minute, you know, we gotta have a little bit of money for this. So where's that gonna come from first, you know?
Was there any money left?
Just just tonight.
Workers' compensation on COVID.
There would have been, and the the request came from me. Um so to to ask ask Commissioner Shores to help me get some folks, because we didn't we didn't have EMTs that could do both. There were two thirty-minute foot went uh areas, if I recall. Um you know, but and I'm not assessing blame to you guys, I didn't get a bill or proposal in return because they're a volunteer organization. So they accepted the challenge and there you go. Um if they've got seven hundred hours and would like to submit something to us for us to entertain a conversation, I'm more than welcome to hear, but
Yeah, I think
we do have some COVID dollars, we'd have to take a look at how how that works um.
Yeah, I think under the new funding, that would be something that could be done, so.
Yeah, I should I should just coordinate that and see if we've got
That would be great.
Why don't y'all do it?
Probably set a pool aside for that or something.
That'd be great.
And like I say, anytime in the future, we need to discuss that upfront, in my opinion. So everybody's on the same page of what they're gonna get paid, how much. And we also have uh fire departments that, you know, I mean, they're actually getting a tax base already, so.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we should have requested that they
I I think that call went out to all volunteer agencies in the county. Actually, it went out to all the fire departments as well for EMTs to stand by at the COVID clinics. Um only Thomasville and Davidson stood up for that. And we're that's what we do, we we do stand by as volunteer, we don't expect pay for a lot of events in the county and the city. Uh it's just something we've always done, we stand by at the the barbecue festival comes to mind and and other gatherings of that nature. The fair, the county fair, we're always out there uh at the gate of the county fair, we don't charge for that.
But you know you're not getting any money for that, you know? But when you go to putting seven hundred hours in somewhere day in and day out, then that's a whole different story.
Two weeks to flatten the curve, so.
Right.
We all know that it uh everything kind of got extended.
Mr. Smith, would that be something that they could
I would encourage them to submit to me some type of um, for lack of a better word, invoice, if you will, for those seven hundred hours or something of that nature.
Commissioner McClure.
Yeah.
You know, years ago, we used to collect one cent from all the fire departments for collecting the taxes. We don't do that anymore, we gave them the one cent to each one of them. It's um it if that's if that's something that the county gave to them, could we give them three quarters of a cent? And then give a quarter cent to the rescue squad or an eighth of a cent or whatever it might be? Because
That would be huge.
It's what they're doing, they're doing a whole lot that the fire departments ought to be doing and maybe are not doing. So can we look at that and would that be a possibility?
Sure.
And how we would split the money, I'm probably gonna get all kind of phone calls this afternoon.
I think I think so.
Yeah, a game changer for the rescue squads. We would be on par with, you know, other counties, Rowan County is one shiny example of what a well-funded rescue squad looks like.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
I mean, one of one of our biggest, like I say, one of our biggest differences from fire is our level of training and our focus on training. Fire's focus on training is fire prevention, fire stop. Our focus is not on fire, not at all. We're completely, we're lifesavers. Fire department, yes, they are too, as far as a fire. But we are the ones that's out here on the traffic accidents. Hundred fifty or a hundred twenty-five calls last month.
I just got a question for you, talking about training. Is this something the fire departments are not, I mean, they're buying the tools and they're they're not following up with training? You'd think they'd want to do that and you'd think they were, so.
They they cut up the occasional little car, little on training.
They're doing a little bit. They they're years behind what level that we've provided.
And to follow up from what Commissioner McClure just said, I'm thinking, Commissioner McClure, if the fire departments are willing to give up that penny, if they are, then they need to discuss with Davidson County Rescue and Thomasville, we don't need to duplicate services. So we don't we don't need everybody with a cha- uh with a quickie saw on their truck. I mean, you know, if if you guys are gonna specialize in one thing or two things and uh
Early on in my career in the rescue squad, on on a motor vehicle accident, especially out in the county, the fire department would arrive on the scene, they'd pull a a charged hose line off, they would they would disconnect the battery of the car. They protect that car from catching on fire if it was a pin-in, and they would wait for the rescue squad truck to arrive with the tool. That was the that was how it always happened. You didn't have fire fire departments coming up with their own tools. And we were always there.
Has that changed now, though? I mean, do they do have the tools?
There usually will get there, but they've already started on, you know, taking the car apart with their tools on their truck. The 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 focus is no longer on what it used to be, which was fire prevention and and scene safety and traffic and all those other things that the fire department provides. Now they're looking at more uh rescue on top of all those other duties. And there are volunteer departments as well, so if they have three people show up, one driving the truck, you're gonna have to separate all those duties out amongst, you know, just a handful of people. And 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 one of the biggest ones that they do provide on an accident scene is protection of that accident scene with the apparatus as well as people doing traffic uh control. So you're just adding another uh another very important uh job, if you will, on top of those already important jobs they're they're tasked with.
There's not really any way that we can dictate to the fire department what they purchase.
Sure.
But we can we can do something, I think, with that penny tax. And I don't think that the rescue squad would need a penny, I think that that just a portion of that would be a tremendous amount. An eighth of a cent
Sure.
would be
Yeah.
would be uh tremendous and and perhaps that would uh that would solve the problem.
It would be a ga- a complete game changer for us.
A half a penny would be just fairy tale workforce.
Yeah, we don't make you rich.
Exactly, I mean, but we would feel rich with a half a penny, you know, we don't need a penny. I mean, yes, they would be great, but a half a penny would be
Well, you said a lot ago that that a penny was how much?
I I I don't, I wasn't really involved in the the specifics of the finances, but it was some twenty years ago, there was a discussion about one half of a penny from from the fire districts that we covered in Davidson County Rescue Squad. And at the time, I I the I think it was a half a million dollars, which twenty years ago, that was even more money. And it was a kind of a shock, and obviously that was immediately shot down when the county fire chief stood up and said, you know.
Do y'all have any idea how much it would be off the head?
Doing this math, I mean, the budget for the resc- for the all of the fire departments is around, I'm just doing round numbers, thirteen million dollars. So my five by point five four, I mean, times point five four five by a hundred. Am I looking at that right?
So thirteen million?
Yeah, just for a round number, it may be a little more, but it's not gonna be much more.
But we provide for the inside the cities also, don't we?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The whole county.
So that's not just it's just the volunteer fire departments, it's the city fire departments too.
You know, like our our name is Thomasville Rescue Squad, but we serve a lot more than just Thomasville.
How many of those hundred and some calls that you made in the last were inside city?
So about ours is about half.
So really, Thomasville should be doing a lot of that.
We're trying to work with them too.
A half a pin- I mean, a penny for what we are looking at in terms of value for the fire districts is only gonna generate about seventy-five thousand dollars.
A penny from each one of them?
Yeah, but that's not including Little over seventy-five thousand. That's not including the city's conversation, and the other challenge is gonna be, who's gonna coordinate that conversation?
Yeah.
Taking those funds from them.
Yeah, the logistics or something else, I was just looking for a funding mechanism.
Yes, but about seventy to seventy-five thousand, if a penny from just our fire districts.
You you're absolutely right, if you take try to take a a penny from them, they're gonna say, hey, we're doing the same thing, why are you taking it from us?
Mm-hmm.
We've got stuff on our trucks too.
Well, I mean, and I think I say, that would be Chuck question, the mechanics of the quote-unquote taking it from them, I'm not sure that we can do that.
Uh Chuck would have to render judgment on that.
I we may can ask the question if they would be willing to provide, but I'm not sure how that goes.
Yeah, there's something else.
It's gonna be a challenging topic, to say the least.
How much money do y'all need?
This is the conversation.
Yeah, let's okay, we've we've heard, thank you very much for coming and speaking with us. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
It's been a better pleasure.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay, um. All right, our next item of business is the job description review process. I'm gonna call on Mr. Deal to lead this off, again, this is information only. We have a handout, okay?
You should, you should have three.
Documents paper clipped together.
Oh, this is this is
That's right.
I think this is it.
We did that, we gave up all the control we had.
And the review sheet.
Hard to go back.
You say documents is
This this one with the with the uh paper clip.
Got Davidson County up top, isn't it? I love them.
You shouldn't even come
I don't have that either.
You shouldn't have come to work today.
I put them out yesterday afternoon, they all should be there.
Wait a minute, where is here we go.
There you go.
It was, excuse me, it was there.
At least it wouldn't have snaked.
If we could, I'll I'll go through this relatively quickly or try to. If we could start off with the job description, just want to point out, and this is a Casey wanted me to come and talk to you guys about this. This is an initiative the HR department is beginning to take um in redoing all of the county job descriptions, performance reviews, and being able to develop interview guides. So those are the three documents you have in front of you. The the current job descriptions are really just a list of responsibilities. So what the new job description will do is it creates key areas of accountability. And so the key areas of accountability are the primary focus with also then those responsibilities under the that those key areas of accountability. So um those will be specific to each job. And you'll see that there's a weighting system for those. The key areas of accountabilities will add up to a hundred, and then the things that are listed under each key area of accountability will add up to a hundred. And that goes into play when we talk about the performance review. So you can go through that job description and see the key areas of accountability, minimum job qualifications. And then there is a section that is labeled characteristic skills and abilities. For the initial um rollout of of redoing the job descriptions, these will be the same for every job description for everybody. Make sense so far?
So far.
So far, okay.
Mm-hmm.
We're good. So then then if we go from the job description to the performance review, this is really, when someone looks at this, this is an Excel document. So it does all of the addition for the person, the the supervisor doing this review. You'll see the first page and it outlines the reasons for uh the type of review, gives you the weight, the scale, which is one to four, one below, two approaching expectations, three meeting, and four exceed.
Where yet?
Huh?
Where are you right now?
Uh I'm on the performance review.
On this page.
Performance.
Performance review, not right there. So is this just directed at this one department, um Tony?
I'm sorry?
Is this just directed at this one department, is that?
No, no, because of the work that I've done with DSS, I they were the easiest one to pick to do as an example, so.
Trying to catch up where you're at.
Let me tee up something real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt, let me, because I've this is my seventh year being here. We've got job, the reason why Tony brought started working on this as a as a something to bring to you all is our performance evaluations kind of got decentralized years ago, where every department's doing a little bit different process. And we thought, you know what, it's time now to take a look at all the job descriptions, like Matt talked about, the next phase of the pay studies, tying some of them job descriptions together to address compression.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good time to look at quote-unquote standardizing them a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um so we can get some grading uniformity and performance evaluations that come out of those that are a little more standard and not so
All over the place.
All over the place.
Okay.
And that can lead you to one day, that can lead you to one day, we're not we're not talking to do about doing this now, but it sets the stage for boards in the past of uh at this level have never wanted to do this, but if you wanted to do merit-based pay, you have the calculation tools in place to do it with, does that make sense? You're not lagging behind.
Yeah.
That's why he's before you this morning showing that. He went to some big departments, because those will be the challenging ones to start kind of piloting it, to see what's the feel for some of the department heads about this? You know, how do you feel about moving in this direction? So that's why he's before you, just
This coincides with Matt's uh
Well, it's certainly gonna help, it's gonna help Matt's job out tremendously, you know?
Yeah, the job description is really one, from an HR perspective, is key in terms of
Really important.
recruitment, compensation, training, and and performance review.
Yeah.
And understanding from the employee.
Absolutely, it sets sets out that expectation.
Yeah.
So so what you see in the performance review is really the job description. With the exception of you have the the administrative section, again, that will be the same for all positions within the county. And then you get into the key areas of accountability, which are uh from the job description. And so the review now becomes specific to that person's job. So when they get the the job description at the interview, they know exactly, or when they start an orientation, what their review will look like as well. And then you have the key areas of chara- characteristic skills and abilities. And then you have a a summary page of all of the different ratings that we would use in the review. And then there's a section for goals, if they wanna if as they write goals, they can track them there as well.
Now now would uh supervisors, directors have
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So the process will be, we will meet with each of the directors and well, first of all, HR will review the current job descriptions. We're gonna start with a smaller department as a pilot.
Mm-hmm.
And so uh we will take the current job descriptions that we will have, put them into the new format, and we'll put basically placeholders for key areas of accountability um and the weighting. And then we'll go to take them to the director and the supervisors and say, review what we did, we've taken this off of your current job description, here's an opportunity to change it, you guys tell us what it needs to look like in terms of the wording and the weighting. So we may, in fact, when Trish looks at this social worker job description, she'll see interviewing and reporting as a key area of accountability. She might go, well, these responsibilities really lend themselves more towards another key area of accountability or switch them around.
Mm-hmm.
So uh a- as as Matt talked about, one of the key parts is to get the incumbent involved in the process as well. So I I would expect that the employee, the ma- the supervisor and the director then would eventually review.
So was this process done? Was this process done in uh support services with the question that I had before?
This was not, so what Matt did actually was was is a prelude to doing the job description in terms of providing a job description questionnaire. And so he his questionnaire focuses on this list of responsibilities and what you do.
So your process would come next with this?
Exactly, that's really that's really what it is, yeah. So the questionnaire that Matt did kind of sets the stage for what what then this then will springboard from, yeah.
The two other pieces that I don't know if you noticed, I do like about this is we don't, page five, this is more of a global organization set of um characteristics that we value. And I don't know that we, you know, we've got a code of ethics. Um and I'm not saying this replaces that, we can have both, but this is nice to have, where every employee knows what we as an organization kind of value.
Yeah.
Then on the backside of that page, the employee also signs those things.
Yeah.
So the accountability piece starts to rise a little bit better, and that's um you have, this serves two purposes. Everybody knows what what we value around here and where we're headed, and they're also understand that we we're gonna hold you accountable to that.
Well, ultimately, um and you know, I what I like is that new hires, new hires know what they're getting into. Uh and I think that's where the problem is in in social services, is is it's they do an excellent job of finding people, and then when they get into the into the career itself,
What about shock?
It's a shock.
Yeah.
It's a shock what expectations are, so I think that's gonna help that area quite a bit.
And then the and then the interview guide, which then focuses on the key areas of accountability when uh and then we create that around those.
I probably like that the most, because that drives what uh Madam Chair was saying.
Yeah.
They know their responsibilities upfront.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That was it, unless you guys have any other questions?
Don't mind, just so Tony, you're talking about doing this for all departments?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it yeah, go ahead, sorry.
It's gonna be huge.
Same thing, it is gonna be huge, but all the departments um the same way.
Correct.
I see, I like that, I like the regimentation, because that way, you know,
Yeah.
this department isn't doing one thing, this department, it's like everybody's on the same this department isn't doing one thing, this department, it's like everybody's on the same island, everybody's doing the same thing.
The, the other kind of neat thing that I really like about this, two things, two things, is I've talked to IT, uh, to Joel, and they think they can create a database where we can do this and, and create data that we can begin to use to manage, help manage, help department heads manage their workforce as well as across the board. So there'll be things in each, like the supervisors or managers' job description, that'll be the same across the board. Staff management and supervision is one. It'd be a key area of accountability within those things listed below in terms of interviewing, performance management, budget management. And so if, if a director has to replace a supervisor, or, or Casey needs to replace a director, we can pull that information and see who is performing, um, in those key areas in terms of staff, staff management and supervision.
I would request that you really, really drive home the performance review. I'm a big proponent of, uh, you know, the performance evaluation and the fact that, you know, you could have performance-based raises, because I do not like rewarding mediocrity. And given across-the-board change, you could have somebody that's, you know, had been written up or a troubled employee, not showing up, not doing their job, and they get the same raise as the person who comes in early, works late, they're out there charging, and I do not like that. I think those that are high performers should be treated as such. But this is an avenue towards that. Also, we have employees that come and they want to get rid of somebody, but last year they gave them a four on their performance evaluation. They haven't done, we have a progressive disciplinary policy. They've never, uh, made a documentation or written them up or did anything, but yet now, hey, we've got to get rid of them. Well, you hadn't had the correct documentation to do your job. This takes all that away. So, great job.
When you take that subjectivity out of it, like Commissioner Elliott just said, you know, I don't like Johnny, so I'm going to give him a, a bad, you know, eval, but yet I've never written Johnny up or never done whatever. Uh, I like taking that out, and, and I think this is definitely a way, so, good job, good job.
Tony, ETA on this thing as far, it's, you know, this is, this math is, um.
Yeah, I, I would be, I would be, if, if we get all the job descriptions done in this fiscal year, that would be the first piece. Um, the, after the job descriptions are done, creating the reviews will be a little simpler, because that's just something that we'll do in HR, we'll take the job description and move it over into the review format.
I probably.
It's going to be a little bit of a lengthy process.
Oh, it will be.
Absolutely.
It will be.
It's a lot of work, yeah.
Who's going to, who's going to, uh, do the performance on the supervisors, they receive these things?
Who will do the performance reviews for supervisors?
Yeah.
Directors?
Or who's going to do the performance on them?
Do what, I'm sorry?
Who's going to do the performance, uh, evaluation on them?
It'll be me, yeah.
You get all those from the directors and?
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I do them now, but they're, but they're so, they're so, I like this too, because I like numbers, as y'all guys know. This starts to standardize them.
That's right.
And I, and bring a sports analogy, and it brings analytics into the game, you know, you have databases.
To the point that Chris made a while ago. You know, you may have a director that doesn't just, doesn't like a person, wants to get rid of.
Right.
And so that needs to be put in his file, if he, if, if that's, if that's bound to be. Because we don't need people like that. We need people who wants to provide a service to, to our employees and to the citizens of this county. And they're a bad mark on the other directors and supervisors, you know?
What's it cost, I mean?
I just, labor of HR, getting it done, I mean.
I mean, there's no out. We get all this upfront work done, it'll be, you know, it should start to level out as we get a process going. We're just basically building something from scratch.
I li- I like it.
I like it.
I like it, looks real good.
Yeah, you know, the quality of this is going to be determined by what kind of, uh, directors and supervisors you have. It starts with them.
It will, and, and it will require, what you mentioned, eliminating some of the subjectivity. There's always the raider bias, you, you always struggle with that. So there, there'll have to be a lot of training involved in terms of how to do it, what those, what those, uh, ratings mean, uh, in each department, and that might be a little different in each department, um, kind of hearing some of that feedback. But, um, so that training, but also the review process that they go through when a review is done. So the supervisor does it on an employee, finishes it with the employee, it goes to that person's supervisor, to the department head. I'll then look at all of them across the board to make sure, so you can see the signature lines on the document, to make sure there, you know, that there's nothing that, that looks odd. I guess is the best way to put it.
Tony, I, I appreciate that, because you'll have directors now that will give everybody a four, so that they can get the raise. But they don't want to, they don't want to do the hard thing as a director and say, you know what, you need to pick it up. You need to, you need to do better.
Absolutely agree with that.
So I appreciate that, Tony.
Yeah, absolutely. That's going to make a huge difference, because I, I, I see that through, you know, I've seen it in years, twenty-some years of law enforcement, you know? If I like Johnny, I give Johnny a good grade, but I don't like Judy, so I don't give Judy a good grade. Or I want to be the good guy, and I'm just going to give everybody a good grade. And then we've got the low-hanging fruit that just keeps getting by.
That's right.
And it's requiring, the other piece of this will be requiring the documentation. If you're giving somebody a four, we need to know why. And also, if you're giving somebody less than a three, we need to know why, and what are you going to do with them to help them improve?
That's right.
It's a morale killer, is what it is.
Amen, brother.
Not to belabor this, but did you say this is going to be like in a database format, or that's?
Yeah, I've talked to Joel, uh, in IT, um, and he thinks, and I've talked to one of his staff members, um, that kind of specializes in that, that, that they can take the review, performance review, put that format into a database, so supervisor then can pull up their employees' reviews, which will be specific. So, um, if they have ten employees, they may have four or five reviews they're doing, um, because they have different positions. So then it, yeah, then it builds into that database, and that reports then can be generated off of that.
So are we doing paper, and then Joel's got to go back and enter that?
Well, we're kind of at that, that stage right now. So we're, we're trying to figure, because right now, the, the first piece is doing the paper, the job descriptions.
Yes.
Then the se- so in a year, hopefully, we're looking at the review in a, in a database, and we're creating, taking the job descriptions, and, and the form, and creating the forms in the database.
So at some point in time, instead of doing this on paper, I'll do it on my computer, and it goes to the database?
Correct.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so it'll go, follow that signature line as well.
Fantastic, I like it.
Yeah, so hopefully, no one will ever have to do it on paper or in Excel, which is where it's at. Hopefully, it'll be in that database.
Good job, good job.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on. Uh, Mr. Martin is going to lead off our discussion of stormwater retrofit program, and possibly, uh, Mr. Leonard, um, will be discussing this as well.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you should have in front of you is a, just a three-page document here for the Davidson County Stormwater Retrofit Program. Um, you all may recall, we've, the county manager's office has been asked to research, uh, what we could do with, in light of the new funding coming in with the American Rescue Plan, um, what we could do to assist private property owners with, that have stormwater issues on their property. Um, so, and specifically to design a program that would be for assistance to, um, not for large developers and businesses, things like that, but just for, you know, kind of the, the little guy that has, has issues on their property. So, um, I'll just walk you through this, and I did ask Scott and Andy and Outen, who've also been, uh, doing some research, uh, with some specific issues on, on this for other funding sources. Uh, but specifically, I wanted to ask Scott, because it's been a hot minute since I've talked about stormwater. I've been out of the planning director business for a while, so, uh, but I'll walk through this. Uh, and I do want to thank Scott for working with me and, and to help draft this. Um, to right off the, out of the gate, the funding, this is tied specifically to the American Rescue Plan. Um, however, with it being private property, it, you cannot use the federal dollars specifically to do that. So we would have to fall under what's called a revenue replacement piece. Uh, basically, that is our ability to claim revenue lost under that, that converts it to county dollars. So at that point, of that portion, if we wanted to set aside, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, something like that specifically for this, we could, uh, but it would have to be under revenue replacement. And the reason being is you can use it for infrastructure, uh, but it has to be publicly owned, uh, infrastructure. So, uh, if it was a, a county site or something like that, it would be no-brainer, we could do that.
Revenue replacement gets a little sticky, don't it?
Um, it does. I mean, there's a pretty high threshold with, of things that we have to report, um, but it is possible.
Yeah, thus far, it's, uh, fairly wide open.
Right. Um, so basically, what, what we have here is, like in section two, uh, projects would have to be at least ten thousand dollars in estimated cost, and we'd put a cap on it, recommend a cap of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the property owner would have to be willing to pay for at least ten percent of the project. Um, and they also would have to pay for engineering. But, uh, I'd kind of walk through the next section here. This would set up a stormwater retrofit advisory committee, uh, which would include members from our office, from the planning department, and also to include from Duane Shop, from support services. Um, and the reason being on that is, if we take on a construction project, we would need to procure for construction services, so we want to have Duane in on the front end, or at least somebody from his staff on the front end. Uh, the qualifications and criteria. Um, assistants must provide, they must provide evidence of damage being caused by stormwater runoff. Um, it has to have data, photographic or video surveillance for at least one year, indicating the frequency of the stormwater event. And then the following criteria. Number one, um, stormwater impact must be directly associated with the development of adjacent property, including property across the road. Uh, the stormwater runoff must not be the result of natural topographic drainage, where properties upstream have increased the amount of runoff. Um, the mitigation of damages must involve the replacement or upgrade of existing infrastructure, um, and not to create, the creation of new best management practices or BMPs, uh, such as ditches, swells, berms, piping, or retention ponds. So we're working with fixing existing stormwater measures that are there. Uh, the big one there, number four, the property owner must be willing to pay a sum of, in the amount of at least ten percent of the total cost of the project. Um, and the total cost of the project would be what is the estimated cost to repair, and also engineering costs to get that estimate. So that would make up the total amount. Uh, number five, the property owner is responsible for providing the county with a sealed engineering estimate from a certified engineer. Uh, that would be used to establish a budget for the project, and to give, uh, support services something to go out and procure, uh, for construction services. And then also, as part of that, the engineer that the property owner hires would serve as the project manager. So they would be the ones reviewing to make sure things are done as designed, signing off for drawdowns, uh, and things like that. Uh, the property owner is required to sign the application confirming their acknowledgement of those qualifications. Um, and we only provide the financial assistance, uh, not supervisory, uh, assistance. So again, going back to the engineer being involved. Uh, number five, implementation. The planning department would serve as the point of contact for this, so applications would be submitted to them. Uh, then they would confirm that the property meets the physical qualifications and direct the application to the advisory committee. They would make a recommendation to you all. And then the specifications there for the engineered conceptual plan, the boundary of the property, uh, including existing infrastructure above and below ground, point source of stormwater runoff creating the impact, um, proposed replacement of upgrade, uh, or upgrade of infrastructure, and then the estimated cost. Um, once the plan is submitted, again, it goes to the advisory committee, they make a recommendation to you all, and then, uh, once you all approve that, then support services would put it out for bid for construction. Uh, and it would be bid in, in, um, in accordance with Uniform Guidance Regulations, it's UG, as you'll hear Duane refer to it as. Uh, that's basically meeting federal guidelines. And that, being it's converted to, to county dollars at that point, we probably technically don't have to do that, but I would recommend that as a, a best practice. You can't go wrong by doing UG. Um, that makes sure that we meet all the guidelines. After that, that, the contractor enters into a contract with the property owners and the county. Uh, the county agrees to pay the contractors ninety percent of the total cost of the project. Um, and the reason why we would want to do procurement is because we're paying directly to the contractor, not to the property owner. Um, total project cost, uh, consists of the sum, again, of the engineering and construction, and then the last little bit there, just, you know, the engineer would actually do the inspections and sign off on all of that. Um, Scott, is there anything that I have missed that you would like to add?
We think that you and I spoke about was possibly a sale.
Oh, yes, yeah, um, it is not in, in this current draft, and again, we're not asking the board to adopt anything today. It's more to get direction, is this something that we want to consider as part of the, the ARP, a discussion, the broader discussion of those funds of, when we go to prioritizing that. Uh, but one thing that I have thought about with this is, it may be wise to include in any program like this, something where the property owners sign an agreement saying that they would not sell the property for so many years. And the reason behind that is, this could potentially cause their property value to go way up, and then they see a windfall benefit that's coming off of federal dollars or county dollars at that point. Um, it's similar to the way things are done with CDBG funds, um, when you do scattered site housing and things like that. It's technically a loan, and they forgive it over a period of years, at one-eighth per year over eight years, something like that. If they sell it, they have to prorate, pay that money back. So if they do some kind of an agreement where they say, we won't sell it for three years, or whatever the board would decide, if they do within that period, they would have to pay it back to the county out of the proceeds of the sale. Just a thought, it's not included in the draft, but that's a concern that I, I had on that, so.
Question for Scott. Scott, when we look at this stormwater retrofit program, does that run, does it coincide with the state's, uh, stormwater runoff program?
No, sir, this is completely independent just for us, and it's for, you know, a, a certain amount of, once the, once you allocate a certain amount of money into this program, once the money's gone, it can die at that point, or the county can continue to, uh, fund that program if it is something that we see as a, um, an advantage to our citizens. But it has nothing to do with the state.
Okay, I, I, and maybe I, I stated wrong. What I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't conflict with the state, what we do with the state.
No, sir.
So there's no conflict there?
No, sir. Now, we're, let me answer it this way. When a developer comes to us and we send his plans to the state, or he's required to do that himself, the state still requires the developer to, to meet all of their requirements and standards. That, that's what the state does, and then we, uh, we understand that. Um, this will not interfere with that, because this has nothing to do with that developer or development. This is going to be strictly for someone who is not, uh, a part of a development, but impacted by it. If you'll notice, the, the criteria, we purposely set it pretty specific and difficult to reach, because we, you know, on a wet year, we could get calls every week from people who are just getting stormwater that they didn't have a year ago. And they wouldn't apply for this type of funding. But if, if there is a, if there is a situation where we have infrastructure on our property to handle stormwater, but something happened adjacent to us that the county approved, and now we're getting inundated, they would possibly apply, could apply for this. It's just a, it's very, very specific, but it has nothing to do with, um, hindering the development of property, or regulating the development of property. Uh, a new developer coming to the county, this program is not going to inhibit him in any way, he'll still have to go through his channels with the state to do, to develop it properly.
Does it make the county responsible for poor engineering designs by that contractor? We're going to approve this, and if you mess up, we're going to have to pay these people downstream. So that goes along with everything, every zoning request we approve?
It goes back to whenever a development comes to the county, we are now having to look at the impact that it could have on the adjacent property. Um, so that we're, we have to predict that a potential applicant could come to a- Um, so that we're, we have to predict that a potential applicant could come to us with this program simply because we've approved a project that we know upfront where the water is going to go.
So, the answer is yes.
Uh, it's going to put more responsibility on, on my department in particular, as well, which is the county.
But in, but in response to that, the answer is yes. If we approve it, and it's poor engineering, and it, uh, downwater affects the property down below it, we're responsible to the degree of this document here. Yes or no?
We're, we're.
Not legally.
I don't want to say yes, because I want to say that we're, we're providing an avenue that if we did approve something that engineering failed, then we give that person who's now impacted on something that we approved, an avenue to get some satisfaction.
That sound like a yes to me.
Commissioner, I, with, with all respect to Mr. Wayne.
For application, I should say.
Yeah, I, I think this addresses a separate issue. I hear your concern about our approval of subdevelopments and whether we incur any liability as a result of the approval of that subdevelopment. But I think the document you're bringing today is intended to address a separate issue, and that's where a problem exists, as some property owners have recently brought these problems to the board. And with the funding that is available, that, and Jason and Scott have, have tried to come up with a program to address very narrow issues with a very limited source of funding for a very finite period of time.
Time, right.
Right.
Not forever. That's one of the reasons why we call it retrofit, instead of, um, any other word. And, and I think the board's well aware, we, you know, Andy and Outon's here in case y'all wanted to talk details, but I think everybody's got it. We, you know, we are pursuing other grant opportunities for such matters as well, that it would be similar to the Cunningham Brick Project. Um, difference being, though, at thirty thousand foot, you say, "That's the same issue, you know, it's private property," there's a little bit of the devil's in the details, the, the storm can be proven for the, or at least the feds determine it did, let me say it that way. So, that becomes the impetus for everything they review thereafter. When they reviewed the, when FEMA, Outon's been talking to FEMA, when FEMA came and reviewed these pipes on the back of the middle school, it was that somehow through their calculus determined that, ah, maybe the storm X could have contributed part of this. So, we are exhausting all other opportunities in and of trying to figure out anything else. But, um, a few of you have asked, was there any option at all on the table, I guess, was the question. This is the best we could come up with.
That's county dollars.
Well, essentially, and that's, the problem with, you know, initially, we thought it could be strictly the federal dollars. And this morphs into a little bit of the sewer conversation. Late last week, I was, um, kind of on call with some experts about this. Even the sewer dollars, we'll talk about this later under this revenue replacement model. This is morphing onto a different topic, but it's, it ties. We're going to have to claim some of our sewer upgrades on revenue replacement. If it's for new growth, like economic development, the federal dollars won't, won't qualify. It has to be for an existing system. So, this is similar, it's got to be for, you got to have been running a public stormwater system, which we don't. So, um, those federal dollars, again, where they keep coming, folks keep going out on TV saying they're open, it's what, that's not exactly the case. So, uh, we'll tide that conversation later, and we think we can generate enough, uh, from the revenue replacement to handle our needs. But we'll, we'll get to that later. But yes, it, it, to answer your question, along with the answer, you replace, your revenue replacement is a way to turn it into county dollars, which does make this a little bit more challenging, because then you set the stage for, it's a pro con and everything. You set the stage for, it was federal dollars, but now it's converted to county, and you've opened up a little bit more, a little bit wider scope than maybe anticipated, so.
I think it comes back to, yes, you do set a precedent, but we also set a precedent in how we deal with, uh, stormwater issues when we approve, um, these, these properties and what we require. And I, I think, um, I want to thank it was Commissioner Shell who had said before that we require them to have an engineer drawing, and if they put a little money up front, it shows that they're going to make sure that they're not going to allow these things to happen going forward. And I think that's our biggest concern, is to make sure that these things don't slip through their radar and happen any further. Now, we've got some properties now that have been affected by certain things that we've approved, and they've got some water issues, and, uh, you know, that's what that is. But I think our biggest concern is to make sure it never happens again. I think we've already addressed that.
And, and Commissioner Shell, just to, to your point about, you know, approving the, the plans and, and that sort of thing. One thing to, to point out, we're approving the application, if, if this were to go through, we would be approving an application that it meets the guidelines for the program. The actual design is going to be the engineer's design. So, the engineer's putting their seal on it, saying that it will mitigate this issue. So, from a legal standpoint, they, the, would they potentially come back to the county? I think that's a, that's a possibility, but ultimately, that's going to go back down to the engineer. Um, that's going, under the chain, it's going to go back to them. They, they are the ones that are assuring that it is mitigating the problem. Um, and that's not something that's, we would expect of Scott's staff or anybody here, uh, because we're not engineers.
Well, the only, only problem with that is there's no way to, to know what's downstream, what infrastructure's downstream, that can handle what capacity. So, every single one of them has to be looked at with suspect.
Well, and, and you don't know what the future holds either for the next development, so.
You bring up a good point there that I hadn't thought about, okay? You fix this property owner's problem. What have you done to the property owner now? Did the water's flowing even faster a quarter of a mile down the road or a half a mile down the road? I don't know that we've thought about that in this whole scheme of things. And now you've resized a bigger piece of pipe, but now you've thrown more water, and that you're going to have that person coming to you now going, "What have y'all done? You, you flooding my house over here." Does that make sense to you?
I think that when the engineer does the plan.
Yeah, because it doesn't go to sewer, it just goes out.
Right, it's going to go on the ground somewhere.
Going to go to the next person down the road that may have a.
Point. Yeah.
You fix, that's right, you fix that piece of property, what about the four people down below there?
Now, you got way more water flowing faster.
So is it.
And then you got an engineer, like I say, these engineers, they can't, they can't protect us against everything. I mean, we having record rainfalls and record amount of time, and, you know, nobody can ever, that's why they flooding out in the Midwest. It destroys hundreds of homes, you know? I mean, just, you don't know.
Wouldn't take long to get into a substantial amount of money. I don't think it would, because the person's going to have to pay ten percent. This is not cheap stuff to, to, to fix. If it's a hundred thousand, this gentleman or lady is going to have to come up with ten thousand dollars, uh, and the cost of an engineered fee, which is what, a thousand dollars? And, uh, you know, I think that, I, I don't think that it will be a situation where you have a lot of activity. I don't know, and, and I don't know that we set a precedent, because the precedent that we set is that the people can apply, not that we'll approve it.
Then you're picking and choosing.
Huh?
So, then you're picking and choosing, I really don't like that.
Well, you have an advisory committee, and if the advisory committee looks at it, and it has, uh, the, the, um, cause of the problem was that they built in a area that was prone to flooding, you may not want to approve it. I mean, there are some circumstances there. And, and the other thing is, has, has the homeowner done stuff that accelerates the problem? I mean, they may have done some landscaping themselves that caused it, some of that issue. But those are some things that, uh, that the advisory committee, I think, would look at. You know, and, and, you know, the thing about it is, is you could buy flood insurance, it is expensive, but if, if you have something that's recurring every time it rains, it's not going to work, because they won't insure it.
Do we, do we need a little bit more time to look over this? I, I think we're, we're not asking for a definite decision. We also need to decide how much money that we wanted to place in this fund. How much ARP money, right?
Right, yeah.
Right, to establish.
If, if this is.
Until it runs out.
Right.
And then you're going to get into, well, what notification did you send out? Most people don't know about it. And, you know, this is not an isolated problem. Once people find out that you have this policy in place, they're going to be coming to you. I'll give you an example, I recently just got sold a piece of property that they put the subdivision in behind it. I never had any water problems. When they put that subdivision back in, it flooded every time it rained. Of course, the people knew, they bought the property, they're going to put some piping in down there. But you're going to have people coming to you at all, that, that, that you don't even think about, that's had problems. It's not telling, and then if you put a limit on it, well, I didn't know about it, no, I didn't see no notification, you know, I didn't see all this. Why, why you fixing him, and you won't fix me? You're going to run it down.
Well, I think, um, I called Scott about this, and I think he said every time it rained, you get about a dozen calls that the property owner's next door is flooding. So, that's the can, I wormed you opening up, and I just think it's a slippery slope that we're going down, because, again, you better open it up to continually fund it, because once they found out you funded one, they're going to want to know, why can't you, can't fund the second one, the third one, the fourth one? And I agree, I mean, I'd be ticked too. I mean, if you funded one, and mine was flooding, and you couldn't fund me.
Well, and, and to Scott's point about that, I guarantee you, having, I would, having been a, a planning director in a rural county, every rural county in this state gets those calls when that, when there's a heavy rain. I promise you that.
I had a guy in my office about a week ago, or it's been longer than that, a month ago, he was complaining about the flooding. So, I pulled him up on Google, and he lived in the very bottom of the subdivision, in the lowest part. And I said, "You probably should have known this when you bought the house." He said, "Well, I knew it was in the low area." He said, "I didn't, I didn't know, I just wanted to know if there's anything the county could do." So, here you go, there's number two.
Advisory committee would probably kick that out if he built in an area that was prone to flooding. Because you're not going to pay for somebody's ignorance.
Most of these are places that's prone to flooding, that people has the issues with.
No, they, they, they were not prone to flooding whenever they built. Uh, another factor would cause the, the flooding, like a subdivision or a shopping center. The loss of impervious services, which, which you really are getting to. But if the person has built there, and he's been there, and he's, and he don't have a flood problem, and they build a shopping center next door, or a subdivision next door, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about the guy that buys a home that's in a flood area. And they, you know, they know, and especially if you're building in subdivision, and you build at the bottom of the hill.
Let me ask you this, if it's in flood zone, does this still apply? I don't see anything in here, but.
Doesn't exclude if you're in a flood plain, doesn't, we can, we can add that as an exclusion. But if, if, it basically excludes you unless you have infrastructure already on your property to handle stormwater. In other words, uh, there's a case out there that infrastructure was in the ground because they knew they were building houses on the, on the bottom of a hill, a collection spot, and they built it. Now, they built it inadequately, and the person who buys into the property sees the apparatus. They know they have infrastructure. So, they now can apply, and they would qualify because they have existing infrastructure. It's just not that they're at the bottom of the hill. If it's just at the bottom of the hill, they don't even qualify. They have to have infrastructure to handle stormwater, and if it's inadequate because of additional stormwater that's coming adjacent, then they can apply, and we can possibly help them upgrade that infrastructure. It's going to knock out a ninety, ninety-five percent of the people that call our office won't qualify, will not qualify for this.
And, and the bottom line is, isn't it saying that you need to fix this because you're the reason it happened? Your actions are the reason it happened. Bottom line, that's, that's what it's all about. And versus ever, uh, uh, if, if that action is taken, and we make it, and we admit to that, we're opening ourselves up for a liability case down the road somewhere.
So.
A hundred thousand may not touch it, you know?
Qualification number one is proving your point, that it says you have to qualify by, if, if a development occurred on an adjacent property, where the county approves that development. So, um, I understand what you're, what you're saying there.
And if you deny the, the application, that opens you up for liability. So, if you approve this one, you deny this one.
Sounds like a civil case to me.
Yeah, and that's what I was about to, so we're, we're at a standpoint where you've got a homeowner. The county's approved, somebody else come in and move. Whatever's happened here has created more runoff on this homeowner. The county's approved this, they're coming to the county to get relief, and we're either going to accept a program and help for relief for that type of situation where we approved it and it created trouble, or they have to have legal against the person who did it, saying, "Well, the county approved it." So, that is, is slippery, I get, every which way.
There's no liability involved in that, you know, there's no legal, there may be moral, moral liability, but there's not legal liability involved.
They can sue you for stuffing their toes. Don't tell me there's no liability, it costs a fortune for litigation, is that not right, Chuck? Most any litigation's going to cost you a fortune, whether it's merits or.
All right, would, would, do we have any further questions of, 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 of our members? If, if not, do I have direction to put this on, um, for a vote at, at, at next week's meeting?
Or you're going to just put it off for further study?
Okay, you want to do some more studying?
Well, whatever y'all decide, I'm okay with it. I just thought that was for, was, what you said.
Well, maybe it's more provisions that they want to.
It, it makes no difference to me, I'll go either way.
Okay.
We, we really just wanted to get a temperature of the board on how you were feeling.
Okay, well, uh, there's not any, we're not, uh, time is not of essence at this point. This is an idea that we're looking at, uh, as a possibility, so let's.
I'd say put it on there for a vote, and, you know, maybe add that one little portion where the flood plains are not in there. Put it on there, and we'll see how, how it rolls.
There may be some other ones as well, study the thing and then bring it back.
Yeah.
There, there could be, so. All right.
That'll work.
That works for me.
Okay, that works for me.
We've done our part, we just bring the options.
If you think about this, every time we make a, a change to the planning and zoning in this county, we discriminate against somebody and in favor of somebody, every time. The whole zoning ordinance does exactly that. It discriminates against somebody and for somebody.
Thank you for your work that you did on this idea, because I, I, ultimately, I think morally, you're looking at an issue to try to, to help some people, uh, you know, that's, that's where it came from. So, uh, and that's what, you know. We've decided to study it, and they'll, we'll put it back on the agenda, and it'll be an up or a down at that point.
Scott, is. Provide to me, Scott, that'd be fine, we can, we've got another month to take a look at it.
Yeah.
We, this morning was simply a task of, we were to bring options, or an A option, which is really the only thing we could find.
Mm-hmm.
And we kind of pulled this from a program, existing program, uh, from a municipality, actually. But they run a public stormwater program, so, um, that, we felt like we did what we were asked to do this morning. If there's any tweaking, so to speak, we can bring it back, we can continue the discussion.
I, I missed.
Do we need a five-minute break?
I, I missed that.
Okay.
Because I don't ever remember a request in the legislature something like this before the board. What I do remember is asking Scott to come across with, uh, some information that do we have any control over, over the stormwater that comes off, the, do we, actions we can take? I do remember that, I don't remember anything about bringing this kind of study back before the board. It's, it's somebody's agenda.
Okay.
I do have an answer for Mr. Shell.
Go ahead.
I, I remember that, I think Mr. Shore and Mr. Elliott both wanted me to do something from the, from the beginning part. What, what my research shows is that most developments, when they come, uh, to the state, they have to provide, provide a stormwater plan. Once they've already received permission from the county to develop, what we're looking at now is requiring that plan up front. We're going to ask our, the developer to present the stormwater plan, that's going to be money out of his pocket, and we don't care. It may be ten thousand dollars for a stormwater plan, but there, we're going to ask them to bring that up front instead of doing it on the back end, once they've received approval, just so we can look at it. And we're not engineers, but what it does, it, it provides how they're, where, it, it shows us where the stormwater's going to go, and who it's going to impact, and what kind of, uh, plans are going to be, uh, put into place, uh, so that our planning board makes a better decision based on what they're seeing. If something is very obvious that this is going to impact an existing neighborhood, then they can den, deny that development. So, that's what we're looking at, hadn't started it yet, but that's what we're looking at bringing on for new developments to help in that. Yeah, that, that, that requires their engineer to come in and say, "Here's where the stormwater's going to go," after we've masqueraded that. And that's what's causing a lot of this, is the masquerading. It's a new type of development out there that we haven't seen in the past. But we're, we're looking into those stormwater plans up front to give our planning board more information on stormwater so that they can make a better educated decision.
Thank you.
And whenever you look at the, one of the things that, uh, if you could go back and, if your memory serves you right, um, the people who are complaining about it or bringing it to you, what is. um, the people who are complaining about it or bringing it to you, what is causing that? Is it just rain? Uh, is it something that they have done? Um, I know there was one homeowner that, that decided he was gonna, um, take all of his drains and put them into one and run it off his property. And the drain for the basement was in the same one that stopped up down the line a little bit, and he had a whole basement full of water. You know, that's just, that's something that somebody caused himself, and you wouldn't cover anything like that.
That's correct.
That's another good point you bring. What if your neighbor installs storm water pipe in his ditch, and he slows up the water, and it floods your house? Can you make him change that pipe out, or can...
No, I wouldn't. It has to be a development.
We, we tell them it's a civil matter between property owners at that point. This was only gonna be for impacts from a development. Right. So would they...
She, she can call a recess.
I think what I'm hearing you saying, that if, if, if the development exacerbated that problem...
All right, we've had a long day. Let's see if we can move along.
Yeah, you're right. Heard it worse.
Yeah. Call on Ms. Harris to discuss the twenty twenty-two holiday schedule.
Mine, mine, mine two are gonna be short and sweet. The holiday schedules in the meet, the holiday schedules are put together and brought for you in August of each year. And several years ago, the board decided to mirror the state holiday schedule. So if you notice, the, the proposed holiday schedule does mirror the twenty twenty-two state holiday schedule that I've got on there. If y'all are amenable, we'll put it on the Tuesday night meeting on consent for approval.
So move. Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Okay. Well, we'll, I'll put it on for Tuesday.
And then the commissioner's meeting schedule is the next item.
And, um, it is put together for you all to look at, taking in the Fourth of July, Fourth of July weekend account and the NACO conference being July twenty-first to the twenty-fourth, to have the meeting set for Thursday, July fourteenth at eight a.m. for the Thursday meeting. Um, the organizational meeting is set for, um, Monday, December fifth. That is statutorily set on even years. And we only have the one meeting in December, and it does not conflict with the Christmas parade because that, that will be on Monday, December fifth, but you'll see you guys will have two events that day, but one in the morning and one in the evening, instead of anything in the evening. And if y'all are amenable to that, I will put that on the Tuesday night agenda for...
So move. Thank you.
I'll put them on for Tuesday.
Thank you. All right.
Does that take care of the, uh, September? Don't our information meeting in September really conflict with the Labor Day?
Actually, before Labor Day this year.
It is?
It'll be on September first of twenty twenty-two, and then Labor Day will be on, what, the fifth or sixth?
Fifth, I think, yeah.
So we'll be okay on that one. And I made sure that, um, the November meetings did not conflict with the election dates.
You're so kind.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Smith is going to bring to us a discussion related to a mask and policy.
I've, I've got the unenviable task of discussing this topic, but, uh, before I do, I'm gonna ask our public health director, and probably Tony as well, to come up, um, help me out. You've got two pieces of paper at your desk. I'm gonna tee this up and, um, do my best. You've got the, uh, we thought it'd be, we hadn't had an update on COVID stuff in a while, so your graph here is your positivity rate in the county over the last, say, the last couple of weeks, it looks like, middle of July or toward the end of July. Um, not even a week ago, I guess. Uh, you know, at this, let me back up. As this thing has progressed for now going on well over a year and a half, we've always kinda followed the executive orders of, you know, the governor's office in terms of this masking part, or what businesses, you know, we didn't get into that stuff as we called a state of emergency, et cetera. Um, and so back in May, they had, um, still was, they actually released masking for, I think it was anybody... Um, no, they just released the kind, they released the masking period. And, and kinda made an advisement and said, hey, you know, if it's, if it's, uh, you, you strongly recommend if you've got, you know, compromised immune systems, or if you haven't been vaccinated. And so we use, we did kinda go on an honor system, if you will, you know, we let, uh, it's up to the employee. At some point in time, we felt like this thing's gotta get to that level where it's the individuals kinda be, um, hold themselves accountable for how this thing's gonna roll. Um, a few weeks ago, the, or not even a few weeks ago, a week ago, the governor decided, um, he came out with a press conference, and again, I thought it was gonna kinda be more, come backwards in terms of doing these types of things. Um, he took a different approach that I wasn't anticipating, which was, I'm gonna let everybody in State North Carolina figure this out other than me. And so, um, at that point, we felt kinda obligated. We need to bring forth an option to you all. Um, you can either approve or disapprove, you know, if you wanted to do... He had a prescribed method for how to do this, which was very rigorous and not, parts of it we feel like we cannot do. Period. Like, um, testing individuals every day if they're unvaccinated. That seems to be a very tall task, in our opinion. Um, but he recommended following similar suit to the federal government, his policy, which was if you're unvaccinated, um, you've got to get tested, and you've got to put your mask on. So, um, what we thought was, well, if we, the board wished to, we could run a program where HR would keep track of who, uh, was unvaccinated via making a mask policy, and you can take it off if you've been vaccinated, and you prove it, basically. Uh, the testing part, again, seems to be taller for, for just a logistics standpoint of how to do it. Um, and then you get into the game of, um, you know, how do you enforce certain things, et cetera. So the paper you have before you is a sample policy, if the board wishes, would wish to move in that direction, of what that would look like, the scope, how that would be enforced and implemented. Um, and we open it up for any kind of input from there from the board. Lillian's here, in case, I guess you wanna get more technical as far as a little bit of things about the virus. I think she may know some things even about the Delta variant, and now we've got Delta, uh, two-point-oh, it sounds like, coming out of, um, out of some of the Asian areas. Tony's here for the policy part. I'm just giving you some context of how we got here this morning.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a second, uh, if you will. I was, I was hoping that Lily, we, we could let Lillian talk just briefly. Tell us a little bit about the Delta, uh, what you're seeing, um, because we, we, we hear things, but we don't know things. You know, we hear it's terrible, it's, it's, you know, it's...
They'll change it tomorrow anyway.
I know, I know. We, it, you know, just a little bit about what you can share with us. And then I'll call on Commissioner Elliott.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for staying, and I know you have other things to do.
With, uh, technology, I was able to do a lot of work from my cellphone, so I appreciate that. Um, good to see everybody. Welcome back, Ms. Yollin July. Um, I'll be happy to tell you what I know, but as, uh, Commissioner Clor so eloquently stated, it will change. Um, the Delta variant is far more contagious than the previous variant. So that's the thing that sort of makes public health a little bit nervous. Um, the Delta variant is still relatively new. So in regards to how an individual's body processes the Delta variant versus what we'd seen previously, there are not enough studies to say if it's gonna be way worse on you for your health, but it does say it is way more contagious. So the graph that you have in front of you illustrates that. Um, the Delta variant too, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Not every COVID test is run on a machine that will detect the Delta variant or not. So if, um, the machine doesn't detect it, then the person may have Delta, and it'll never be tracked as a Delta case. Um, it's just a little bit more, um, advanced technology and a little bit more done with the test. So when we're talking about what percentage of positive cases in Davidson County are a Delta variant, we can't tell you that because we don't have that data.
Okay, thank you.
Really, as your public health department, uh, we would just say, in regards to the Delta variant, the, the concerning item is just the, the increase in transmissibility between people with this variant.
Okay.
I got a quick question. I didn't quite understand that. So you're telling me there's no way to detect whether it's, uh, Delta during the test?
No, sir, there is. It's just two different machines. So what, you get, you take a COVID test, and some labs use a machine that is capable of determining if it's the regular SARS-CoV-2, and some machines are eligible or able to tell if it's the Delta variant, but not all machines can do that. And I can't, in my mind right now, give you a good equivalent of something that's not a, a test like that, but...
I guess they don't have enough machines now to check it for both.
I guess not. Yeah, I, I'm, I don't work in a lab. We send ours either to the state lab or lab corps. Um, and I talked to our communicable disease nurse... Um, and I talked to our communicable disease nurse last week, and the state is actually doing what they're calling sampling. And I don't know the process for that, but they take a certain number of the, the samples that they get, and they decide, well, we're just going to sample these to see if they're Delta. The rest of them, they're just running the regular old way. And then, uh, our communicable disease nurse said, well, will you let us know? And they were like, mm, doesn't work that way. So we don't even get the data back from the state if it's the Delta variant or not, when we send it to them. I know, it, it's frustrating. Um, because you asked a very poignant question that a lot of people are asking, because when you turn on your television, you see Delta, 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 but we don't have the data, data, data to give you, so I apologize.
The other thing that they can't tell you is whether there's comorbidity involved in COVID virus.
Yes, sir. I mean, that, that's one of those things that, you know, we rely a lot on stories from individuals who are directly affected. But you're right, when we pull the numbers for what are classified as COVID-associated deaths, the comorbidity is there if we go into it and look in medical charts and things like that, which we have access to. But still, very, very hard to paint an accurate picture for you guys.
So.
Okay, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris was next. Sorry, Chris.
So, that's fine, Commissioner Shell. I had typed a, uh, document that I would like to, to read, and then I'd like to address a couple of things regarding the human resources policy that, that I've read. Um, just because my memory is, uh, not as good. But I'm 100% against mandating any individual to wear a mask or to prove that they've received any kind of vaccination, personally. I do not like to overstep in a person's private freedom and, uh, patient-doctor confidentiality. If we continued about such rhetoric, we're going to lose more and more rights as citizens. Just think, at the beginning of the COVID-19 journey, when this board convened, uh, to, to do the services of the people when COVID-19 started, it wasn't an option for this board to know specific details about an individual's, uh, needs who were testing, the, where they lived at. I know Commissioner Yates had asked about that, and some of that information at that time was denied. Now we're talking about listing folks on two documents to prove vaccinated or non-vaccinated persons. We can choose to take a stand now, or we can choose not to complain when, uh, more rights are taken away. I believe that if the governor of the state of North Carolina, if Rory Cooper really, truly has concerns about North Carolinian safety, then he would take the mandate of a sanctuary state, he would take that off of North Carolina. We would, we would, uh, control our borders. Um, I believe that, uh, you know, letting COVID-positive people come into the state, do all this, that's, that's fine. But we need to focus on the southern border. We're letting people come in that are COVID-positive. I've heard countless public health directors who get, um, who get their concerns, uh, I, I guess from the same area that I'm looking at, how do we control that? The science is changing like the tides of the sea, uh, we all know that. Vaccinated people now must wear masks. Children who were not affected at, at the beginning are now heavily affected, and yet we have zero studies to prove what the CDC's claiming. We even have limited, uh, studies to prove, from what Lillian was saying, about how many of these positive tests are coming out are truly a variant. So now we're here, we must stand on, uh, the mortality rates that we do know. So the mortality rates is, is clear-cut evidence. Science works as long as it doesn't conflict with another's agenda. And I'm, I'm gonna stand here today, and I stand with President, uh, the, the Senate President Phil Berger, and what he said regarding this variant. And he was like, we don't have concrete evidence enough. I know who's pulling the strings of the health department. I know who gives the marching orders. And I, I totally want to do everything that we can for the citizens, as long as it does not impede their rights, and it does not take away their freedoms. So here regarding this policy, I know that it talks about a violation of this policy could result in corrective action up to and including termination. That is absolutely ridiculous, talking about requiring somebody to wear a mask, requiring them to put their name on a document, and for us to say that we're going to terminate somebody for, uh, a test, or for this, or that, or whatever, when that's not going to happen. Another thing which I think could be hypocritical is the fact that this board would say that this policy applies to all Davidson County employees, when we know that when we required masks last time, there were a lot of us up here on this board that did not wear them, and did not wear them in the building. So whatever applies to all Davidson County employees applies to us also. And I'm not for wearing it. That's why I stand against it. And, uh, I just wanted to say, after saying all of that, I have the utmost respect for every hero that dons an apron, that works as a public health official. I have the most up respect for our health director, Lillian, and her recommendations. But personally, I feel like this is a, an overreach in, in people's freedoms. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Um, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Lillian, just, just a simple question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how many people are in the Lexington Hospital, and how many in Thomasville Hospital that are proven positive for the variants?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
How many people in the Lexington Hospital, how many in Thomasville Hospital that they're treating for the COVID variants?
Well, just for the COVID virus? I don't know that number right now. I'll get it for you.
What I found out was zero.
They don't have any in the hospitals? Okay.
In Thomasville. I, I can't speak for Lexington, but Thomasville, I found out zero. So, I'm just wondering where all this emergency is coming from. That's the only thing.
I think really, um, the emergent, well, when Casey brought this to me and coming to y'all, was really about the governor changed the way that we were doing things. Um, you know, the governor said mandates for people who are unvaccinated should wear masks, and then everything went away. So very responsibly, Casey said, well, let's, Davidson County, we got this. We, we've said months ago that we wanted control in Davidson County, and now we have it. So this is a great place to be, and for us to have this conversation. The concern that I'm bringing to you as a public health director is we watch the numbers, we look at the percent positive cases, um, for the test. Not, not delineating between Delta variant or another, another strain of COVID, the virus. Currently, our percent positive has gone up tremendously. I personally, will be honest with you guys, I was blindsided by this. I would have talked to our manager had I thought that this was coming, and just said, hey, you know, I think that we're going to see a trend. I personally, based on what I know, thought, ugh, schools starting back? We're going to get a lot of people together that haven't been together. We're going to see an uptick. I don't exactly know where this came from, other than to say that this Delta virus is much more contagious. But the numbers have just gone up tremendously. But like you said, you know, there are so many people who get the virus. And in these numbers that I've provided for you today, in these percent positives, I don't know how many of these people would even classify their symptoms as troublesome. I'm, I know, y'all know, people that get COVID-19, they have a sniffle, a little bit of cough. But I was just sharing with, um, Sheila, I was, uh, shared a story yesterday of a 31-year-old young woman, healthy, pregnant, died COVID-19. I cannot tell y'all who's going to be the person that has severe illness. Can't tell you in those numbers who the people that have severe illness are either. It's not the way they track it. COVID-19 is a reportable disease. When someone tests positive, it goes into the state system based on their address, not where they got the test, not anything. Based on their address, and it just says positive, yes, no. It doesn't say positive for Delta, and it doesn't give us any details about how sick they are.
But I've heard, heard of cases, many cases, where a person had tested positive, they went and got a second opinion, and it was tested negative. So, I mean, how do you even?
There's some credibility in the test.
Yeah, depend on.
There is.
What is the actual numbers?
I don't deny this thing.
Oh, I've got people in my family that's, uh, have been seriously ill with COVID.
I'm not going to deny this thing's a real thing, but I just wonder how much is propaganda and how much is real.
Only same thing with that, I would just like, and I'm very sorry, I just wanted to say too, all the data that we have is imperfect, because every positive test that we receive requires a person to get tested. So for the false positives that are in there, we also know, I mean, we, we hear stories every day. One person in the family got sick, they went and got the COVID test, everybody else in the family started getting sick. We knew it was COVID, because it was the exact same symptoms. So a family of five, our data shows one person in the county has COVID. It doesn't have the other four. But again, it's a virus, it runs its course for most people, it runs its course and they move on. But the data is the only thing, as a public health professional, that we can use to track and provide recommendations. But the data is imperfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to this policy. Okay, I think that's what we need to do. Take a look at this policy, look at the specifics, take it apart. Um, if you don't, if you, if you want it at all, is what we need to talk about. If you want a little, is what we need to talk about. I think, I'd like to hear from Lillian, her opinion of a policy or this policy. Uh, because, because we do all value your opinion. I think, like Casey said, uh, we're, we're still saying you don't have to put on a mask, right?
As of, as of Saturday, the mask mandate for the state is gone.
Is gone, okay, so.
And so you won't get any more guidance from the governor in terms of what you should be doing and what you shouldn't.
So there's the, you know, there's the mask mandate gone. This policy does not address, I don't think, and, and, and I just got a look at it this morning, um, telling people that they have to get a vaccine. It does not say that, all right? No vaccines. And I don't think we can control what the federal government is doing that we disagree with, you know, as far as stopping the border, that might be something that I agree with. But I, I don't think it applies to this policy. So, um, if you'd like to make a comment, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to you about.
I don't mean, I didn't mean that negatively. I just meant.
No, 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 I, I, absolutely. I positively understand.
You used it as an example.
We, we can't do anything to stop the southern border.
Right.
But I, I truly believe that the first thing in Mandy Cohen's operative, if, if this is severely as bad as it, everybody says it is. And that's what it is. Everybody's saying, whoa, 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 to the variant. If that's literally going to be the thing, then that's the first place we got to sell it off. You know, that's the very first thing as health directors that, that we would do. That's the first thing that the governor should do, is, you know, the president, all of it. But here, seeing how we don't have control over that, my main concern is that employees and citizens, you know, who, who come into our facilities, their, their personal freedoms aren't overstepped.
Okay, and, and, and I heard that, and I heard that. Thank you.
Chair Wobber, thank you. I have not seen the policy. Um, that was not, so, oh, the po, oh, that's the policy.
That is yours.
Okay, so, thank you. I didn't know what y'all were looking at. Okay, I apologize.
See, I didn't know. It's what I'm asking.
So that policy was written when we still had mandates that you had to wear a mask in healthcare settings.
Okay.
So, but the thing about it too is, and the manager and I have talked about this, the health department is very different from other county buildings, because on a regular day, we're seeing about 80 people in our building that are unvaccinated.
Right.
80 to 120. The services that we provide to these people occur at closer than even three feet. You're on top of somebody when you're giving them a vaccine. So the health department's very different from the county. I just want to say that. Um, and in regards to what my recommendation is, I've had lots of conversations about this. And as a public health director, the thing about, uh, any mitigation strategies that we're taking about this, COVID-19 is a communicable disease. So what I do as a COVID, if I had COVID-19, any actions, anything that I do while I'm infectious, affects those that are closer than six feet to me. So, when we talk about looking at recommendations to protect people in our world, in our buildings, in the Davidson County government, I always try to remember that my individual choices affect others with communicable diseases. So at the health department, we've talked about this with the schools in the last few weeks and things like that. Every strategy that we can employ to protect people is what the health department recommends.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I would like to say something, you know, I, I've listened to all of this, and, and I know that, and I'm speaking for everyone in here. COVID-19 has affected each and every one of us in some way or other. Our family, or our neighbor, or our friend, or, or someone we know. It's hard for me to understand, a lot of people think this is, is not a serious matter. And it's, it's serious, and it's getting, it's getting worse again, you know, it seems like with this new, uh, deviant, uh, coming up. But I, 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 I don't understand how they can not say it's serious when you look at over 600,000 people died from this. Over 4 million, over the whole world, has died from this. And still, and not taking offense with anybody, or not taking issues with anybody. But when some says it's not any more contagious than smallpox, I, I do take offense to that, because it is contagious. And, uh, I, I think that when we say, when we say it's not affecting us as bad as the other county or the other part of the state, that's true, because I think we've done a lot more things here than we've done in other parts of the state. Look at, look at Louisiana. Uh, you're right, we, we probably don't have anybody in the hospital today here. You look at Baton Rouge, I heard last night on TV, they don't have a bed. And they got the biggest hospital in Louisiana. They don't have a bed anymore. They have done, run out of respirators again, these type of things. So it's, it's hitting different parts of the country, and it's going to hit us before it's over if we don't do, uh, continue to do something. And I think we're doing what is right now. You know, you know, back in the early 1900s, probably the same type of people didn't like smallpox. It was rearing its head up. It, uh, they started, uh, asking us to immun, uh, take the vaccinations. Uh, probably a lot of people didn't want to. Up in, I understand, up into the 1950s and early 60s, still people were dying from smallpox. But, but now that we've got that herd immunity with smallpox, it's been eradicated all over the United, all over the world. Uh, now, anytime you say anything, you know, just like COVID, it's not 100% either, where it's 99% or 98% or something. So you're going to find somebody's had it. But I think what we've done has been perfect. Uh, I wish we could have done more, but it's affected Davidson County like everybody else. And, uh, it's continuing to, I don't see this as taking our rights away from us. It's, if we don't put something down, unless we do something, then maybe that governor, or that president, or somebody's going to come back later and say, then you haven't done anything. This is what you're going to have to do. So maybe we need to put something on paper. And what I'm reading at this, is we put something on paper that really doesn't tie anybody down. It says, wear a mask if you want to, don't wear a mask if you don't want to.
That's what it says.
Uh, it's not what it says. I just think it's a serious problem, and, and I've had talked to the health department, the health, uh, director, uh, our governor, our secretary Cohen, all of them, they've done a great job. And I wish they could have even done better, but they've done a good job. And I, I, I think we need to follow our directions that our health department's been doing, and I think we continue, need to continue with it. So that's about what I'm going to say. There's only one point I would like, because I've heard this twice, that not required. It's, it's required, a violation of this policy could result in corrective action, including termination.
That's right.
So if that's not forcing somebody to do something, I don't know who it is.
It, it also says, Commissioner Shell, in the second paragraph, said employees that are not fully vaccinated will be required to wear a face covering at all times during the day, including in their vehicles. So that is a mandate to wear a mask if you've not been vaccinated.
I don't see it in front of me. The intent wasn't, if it is something that, there's a typographical error.
You can use mine.
To only, in, at the health department, we would like to require masks, we can't stay six feet away from other people. Because we recommend. Just because it's a strategy that works, and feel like it is infringing on other people's rights when we ask people to come to the Davidson County Health Department and do a job, but then are not protecting them from a potentially infectious disease. Again, there are certain services at the health department that cannot be done within six feet of separation from others. So we're trying to protect everybody. We all know, even if you get the vaccine, you can still get the virus. So for an individual who works for us at the health department, who has taken the responsibility, for whatever reason, their choice, maybe they're high-risk, maybe they have high-risk family members, they made that choice to get the vaccine, then I ask them, as the health director, to come in and do a job, vaccinating people that are not protected against the virus, more likely to spread the virus because they're unvaccinated, at a closer than six-foot range, and then spend time with that person in a car going somewhere. That's where the car piece comes in. We're saying that if you're with other people in your car, that you need to protect. We're saying that if you're with other people in your car, that you need to protect them. That's what that's about. It's not about, the, the intent is when you're closer to someone else, to try to protect the other folks.
I agree with that in the healthcare setting, for what you do. I'm speaking on this as being an entire county-wide policy, not the health department.
I got a question here, uh, Lillian.
Yes, sir.
I read just a minute ago, and I should've read this a while back, but vaccination for, to reach herd immunity, um, is either vaccination or past exposure. Do you agree with that?
Well, okay, so this is something I delved into with the state, um, doctor last week. Three months after you've been infected with COVID-19, they do not believe you can get reinfected. They do believe after three months you can. Herd immunity, I'm not an epidemiologist or anything like that, but herd immunity is much easier when you don't have a virus that keeps mutating. So if everybody got the Delta virus, and everybody had that, that particular variant, then the likelihood that we're gonna get past the Delta variant is great. But when it mutates again, we're back sort of kind of in the same boat.
That's the same way with the vaccine though, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, because I've had it twice.
You've had COVID twice?
Yes, ma'am. I had it twenty twenty in January, and then I had it back in twenty twenty-one, so, probably a year later.
Do, and did you know if you're, I'm sorry to ask a personal question, but did they run for the Delta? Do you know if it was the same?
They didn't run for that, that was bef- well, if they did, they didn't tell me, okay? And I doubt they did, I mean, they just pretty much tell you, you got COVID, go home, you know? And don't be around anybody, so. But that's why I asked that question, because I just read that a few minutes ago. And it sounds like the vaccination and past exposure is pretty much the same thing.
Except, again, with that variant. So what they're telling us at the state is, you know.
And the variants, it works as well with the vaccination, it's a different, uh, strand.
Exactly, just like the flu thing that we deal with every year.
So I guess what I'm saying is, if you've been vaccinated, going back to this policy, if you've been vaccinated, that still don't protect you against the, uh, other strand.
Which is behind the healthcare setting with the rate of transmission we're seeing now. We're saying if you can't be six feet apart from people, you gotta wear a mask, even if you're vaccinated.
It's supposed to reduce sickness.
Yeah.
Oh, I get that, but I'm saying, you don't have to wear one if you've been vaccinated. But you do have to wear one if you haven't, so there's no logical reasoning behind that if your vaccination does not work against the other strains.
It, it, the, the way the state explains it to me, who, my degree is in biology and chemistry, so I'll just say, I got some science, but not like this much of. Um, the way that they explain it to me, the importance for the vaccine regarding transmission, it does slow the rate of transmission. As we slow transmission collectively, not just in Davidson County, but everywhere, it reduces the virus's work to mutate. So the more people that get vaccinated, the slower we transmit the virus to each other, and the slower it mutates, which will allow us to develop better vaccines in the future if there are less variant strains or things like that.
And that's what their belief is, and I'm not advocating whether you should or you shouldn't. Or, you know, the other argument to that is, by other scientific research, is it gets more aggressive.
Right.
So, you know, your vaccine done nothing but make it more aggressive for the next person to get it, or whatever, so. But again, I'm not advocating either way, it's just too much information out there, nobody really knows, you know, in my opinion.
Different, every day.
Right.
Recently, they come out and said that the mask that you get from the store ain't doing nothing anyhow. That you have to have a ninety-five mask or something like that. Anything that you've got a mask on that you can get smoke through, you can get the virus through. But that's another piece of information that is different. And they've changed it four or five times, wear a mask, don't wear a mask, wear two masks. And, and, and that's one of the reasons I don't agree with, as forceful as this is. I think if you would, if you would change must in here to strongly advise the employees to do this and such and such, and I, I don't think that we ought to require anybody to produce, uh, a card. And, uh, we don't do that for the flu.
That's right.
You know, and that's a communicable disease. But I think that, that if we change it to say that this is our position, we, we strongly advise people to be vaccinated, I don't have any problem with that, I'm vaccinated. But, and in addition to that, we strongly advise those who are not vaccinated to wear a mask. Now, I'm sure that most of your people up there are wearing a mask anyhow.
They are.
And, and to, to require our employees to do something that we don't require the public to do is, is a, is a reach for me. We don't require the public to produce a card when they come in, or, or produce a mask. Now, I don't think that we should, that should be a requirement, and I don't think, obviously, I don't think, I, I think you're putting in there a determination, I think that's a, I think that's a, really a joke, because I don't know that anybody'd be terminated for not wearing a mask. But, but I, I, I don't disagree with the points that are in here, but I don't like the mandates. I like, we strongly suggest, this is the position of the health department, it's to your advantage, we strongly suggest you do it this way, no issue with that. Whenever you start requiring a card, or, or requiring a mandate, I have a little issue with that.
Yeah, I'm not for requiring a card either, so.
I can just tell y'all too, as the health director, I literally only know who's been vaccinated, even in my department, when they tell me. So we don't require a card at the health department, um, so, you know, people tell us if they wanna tell us, I don't know who's been vaccinated unless they've told me, or if I happen to be there when it happened, but.
That's not what this is, huh?
Well, this is, so the way that we work it at the health department, before the cases went up so exponentially, we had the policy in place at the health department. If you are throughout the building, whatever, and you're vaccinated, all right, let me back up, I apologize. We have a policy concurrent with the executive order at the time that the governor put forth that said in healthcare settings, you have to wear a face covering. That was the executive order. So we at the health department kind of took that, and we're like, okay, well, this is what we need to do. We realized that we're a little interesting, because we have healthcare settings, and then we have like environmental health at the health department, which isn't really classified as a healthcare setting, but we're in the same building, so what does that mean? So our original policy said, we have a face covering policy in the building. If you would like to not participate in the face covering policy, fine, just tell your supervisor, hey, I'm vaccinated, I don't need to wear a face covering. And that's what they did. Nobody told me anything, they told them that, and that was the way it worked. Again, on the honor system, no one brought forth a card, no one made a copy of a card, there was no list. Um, again, we're also in a healthcare setting where I think our employees know the risk of coming in the building when we have all these unvaccinated people. And I say, I don't know how many people come, public comes into this building every day, there's a chance they're vaccinated, there's a chance they're not, but when we're doing vaccine clinics, and last Friday we saw a hundred and ten people, uh, that's a hundred and ten people we know that aren't fully vaccinated in our building that day. So the risk is a little bit greater at the health department on the front end, because we know the people that are coming in are not vaccinated. So I think that's why a lot of our folks are choosing, you see people and they're like, oh, there's somebody, and they walk a little bit further away, just because we know that the rate of transmission at the health department could be greater than other buildings in the county because of the people we're serving right now.
Well, could you, uh, would you have any objection then to taking this and, and making it on the honor system as opposed to mandate?
I think that that is a, a, a great idea.
Yeah, I was about to, I was about to jump in and say, I'm hearing a, a, a nice reasonable mix here, so if that's, if.
Do what?
I'm jumping in because I'm hearing your idea being the, possibly the proposal here, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
As long as it doesn't say, you know, you have to produce a card for this, so.
Correct, correct, but with, and with that.
Just on the honor system.
Correct.
Wear a mask if you want, don't wear a mask if you don't want.
With that, we can just simply change the signs at the door saying, CDC recommends if you're this, if you wear a mask, if you're not vaccinated, et cetera, and that call it a day.
Thank you, Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Um, I agree with, with Commissioner Elliott, and Commissioner McClure, and Yates, and some of the others. Uh, I'm just not about being mandated, and I don't, I don't think they should be mandated. If, if you wanna wear a three mask, wear them, you know? That's fine, that's your business, but I don't think we should mandate people to wear them. Uh, and I agree, if, if we can take the mandated stuff out, and the, you're gonna be fired stuff out, then, you know, I, I would have no problem with that, as long as we leave it to the people to make that decision.
Absolutely, and I think to Casey's point, we don't even need this document.
Yeah, we don't even need this document. If you're just wanting to replace the signs. That's what we wanted, was feedback from you all. Let me be real clear about this, this is not us pushing this on you. This is us giving you, we don't know where you wanna go when we bring this forward. Run the gamut from, hold on a minute, Tony, it could run the gamut from, every business in North Carolina is now gonna have to choose, do they do full body cavity searches for this stuff? Or do they let you just come in and eat? I've got, we've got restaurants in Greensboro now that are asking for the card. So it's gonna get wild in North Carolina in terms of who's enforcing this and who's not. We were, we have no idea where the seven of you's minds are, I mean, I think I do, but I've gotta be responsible to bring you something. I know we can't test everybody that comes in the door, and I also know we're not gonna mandate vaccines.
And we know.
But I gotta get something that's at least, I say, a little bit to the middle, but get some feedback to come out of this with, what are we going to do? Because the governor's now saying, I'm not gonna tell you what to do anymore, that's on you.
And that's what I thought was somewhat of a, of a joke, because he's telling these private companies, these school systems, to test all these employees who have a religious, uh, reason why they can't test, they have a physical, or a whatever, that, they're gonna test these people daily. We don't even have enough tests right now for the health department to have test, to test Davidson County employees daily.
And we got, we got a.
So that's a joke.
You got other areas like transportation, I had to check with Richard, you know, because they get so much federal money. Some folks on those vans are gonna have to wear a mask, because it's a requirement from the federal government. So you get peculiar things like that. Lillian ha- kinda has, you know, she has her own board, she's got her own little bit of different set of rules, so it wasn't gonna be a one-size-fits-all anyway, but what I'm hearing is, is the, the, um, what's the right word for it, we recommend you do these things, and we can replace signs on the doors like that, very simply, and we can take the executive order piece out of it, because there is no executive order now, it's just the county's recommendation, per CDC guidelines, et cetera, and be done with it. Um, until we see, and we may, you know, we may be back, I don't know, it is, this'll determine it, I guess. I mean, we can all have that conversation later, but I guess we can go from there. And that makes reasonable sense to me, I kind of figured that's where we would land, but I thought I would do the responsible thing, at least giving you something. I figured the mandate piece wouldn't, wouldn't be popular, I understand that. But I didn't wanna not, um, say, did you think through an enforcement question when I? And again, the enforcement piece would be based on, you don't wanna, Commissioner Yates's point is very valid. I mean, you've got, you've, you've got the possibility, as this thing moves on, it actually gets let, you know, all SARS viruses usually, and I'll use the word usually, as far as my epidemiology skills go, get weaker as they, as they mutate, they don't get stronger. As a human race, we better hope that's the answer to this thing. If not, we'll have some serious issues, especially if children get involved. So I say that to say, if it follows the path of human history, it could, I'm, I'm not pretending I'm a doctor, it could, as time goes on, but we could be talking a few years from now, I have no idea. So, um, the, Lillian's right, the spread of it's causing it to change because it's alive. It's wanting, it's seeking ways to get around your vaccines and the things that you're doing to put in the barriers for it to live, basically. It's trying its best, and it's smart, it's catching on, hey, he's got a vaccine, I think I'll change this, I'll change that, and I can get around that. And sooner or later, if we don't develop better vaccines, which we will, it'll get around the ones we got now.
And only time will tell, that may be the worst thing we could've done.
Right, and if, I mean, if we're gonna get into the biological talks too, you gotta get into the fact that some of these, some of these biological makes, makeup of this disease is, is not derivative from nature. So I mean, that's another crazy issue, we don't know what, what it's gonna do. We don't know what the variant's gonna do.
And that's changing, that's making things change fast, but.
If you were to take this and bring it back with all of the mandates and firing and all of that, and make it on the honor system, and bring it back on Tuesday, let's look at it.
And I, I.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need anything.
I, I don't think we really need anything. I like the idea, though, of, of new signs in the building that, that talk about, we highly recommend, but it's, it's, so that people know it's still their choice, I think that's where we are.
Can generate very quickly and be okay.
And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing, and having this discussion. And especially, we appreciate what you do, and, and, and we want to know what you think. We want you to give us your opinion, and as a health director, not necessar- I mean, we like to hear the personal too, but, but as a health director, because we trust you, you, we have entrusted you to take care of our people and make the decisions, that's right.
Yeah, I try to take that very seriously, and really do try to look into that. And I appreciate the board listening to this, and I appreciate y'all putting out signs, because I think it says a lot, when our board says, we do care about people, we're gonna recommend that you wear this mask, because again, if this was not such a contagious disease, it wouldn't be a big deal. We'd all have our own personal choices, if we wanted to get sick, well, we were making that choice. But we can't, I, I, we, we, we can't ignore the fact that my choice affects you, and affects anybody that's closer than six feet to me when we talk about communicable diseases. It is not just me, it is not just my body, it is those people that are six feet and closer to me. So I appreciate y'all directing us to get some new signs up to say, Davidson County government cares about people, we recommend you wear a mask, and then hopefully people will take heed to that, because that's what we're trying to do.
And also, um, if, and, you know, when you are able to share some information about the Delta variant, you know, and, and, you know, hospitalizations and that sort of thing, please, you know, bring that to us at any time, because I think we'd all like to.
As long as it doesn't come from Dr. Fossey.
I, I don't, I don't have direct line of communication to him. I don't have a Dr. Fossey, I have a Jenna Walker who's sitting back here with me, and she is my numbers gal. And she looks into everything, and she gets, she developed the chart that you're looking at now. And so that's really Davidson County data, then we try to bring y'all Davidson County, because that's what we're gonna talk about, thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing right quick, I was just reading a while ago, there's four variants right now, Delta's just one of them.
One of them, yeah, it's gonna continue.
It's the one that caught the news the most, but there's actually four that they pretty much tested, saying the same thing, so, who knows where it'll stop, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary.
We're on item number eight, um, Mr. Smith, uh, discussion of nine-one-one staffing.
Thank you, Madam Chair, real quick on the last one, just one more second, the, I have to get Lillian to back me up on this. The impact to the hospitals is actually data the state tracks as well, but they just say the impact, low, medium, or high. I'd rather her call the hospitals, because we, we, impact data I got from them about positivity rates were different than what she had.
Okay.
But they do have it, so if you're ever curious, um, I watch it just periodically to see if it changes between low to medium or whatever, for all one hundred counties, so.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lillian. Thanks, Tony, Tony, if you can make the signs up, we'll, we'll be good to go.
When y'all checking hospitals, do y'all check, uh, Winston-Salem?
I'm gonna get her to do it individually, but I'm saying the state's pulling data about positivity rates and color coding each county, and impact the hospitals that Commissioner Shale's just brought up is a category, and we were at low, and we've al- we've relatively throughout this year and a half has stayed low. But I've always been curious as about what's driving that, um, that determination, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and having dealt with them on some positivity rate quagmires and data, I would prefer her to just call them. As Steve did, Thomasville, I mean, it's much more efficient.
That is, that'd be the right place, right time, and that's what I'd do.
Yeah, right, we get the, we get it straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak. Um, last item, I hope for deliberation, we got closed sessions. Um, you got, I think all of you are aware of some of the challenges we've got with TCS or telecommunications and nine-one-one, Matt spoke about it before. Um, I think Commissioner Yates even sent me an article, was it out of Oklahoma? I think they were having trouble even out there, this appears to be some type of, a little bit of a nationwide problem. Um, I sent you recently some, uh, what we'll call vacancy rates for a variety of other counties. So you can see, with some recent vacancies we've gotten, TCS, and we've run them through an academy, and Rob, I'm gonna ask you to come on up, uh, while I'm talking, is, if we hold on to those folks, because you get certified coming out of that academy, and you have to sit with a trainer a certain length of time before you can hit the floor, so to speak, to do calls by yourself. If we net some version of those six out of there, we knew we were gonna lose two more in August, that leaves you with eight, you could see what the vacancy rate would be under the worst-case scenario. We probably won't land there, we'll keep some of them, and some will decide this is not for them, that will happen. Um, so we will end up somewhere in that, I don't know, fifteen percentage range. That's pretty normal for a nine-one-one center, actually, as you can see from the numbers that I've sent out. And of course, the vacancy rates have steadily gone down, thirty, twenty, and down to twelve, you know, in the last few years. But to, but to get ahead of this a little bit, because you run an academy, um, that you have to invest time in, get folks in, and then they come out and you hope you net some. The proposal before you today, and you've got call data here, I'll let Rob go through this in just a second, I'm just kind of getting, teeing it up. You, I've shown you where the call projections are going up over the last few years. Also, the length of time for calls are going up, because we have instituted national protocols, standardizing calls, which is what you need to keep liability low. So the calls get a little bit longer, because you're teasing more information out of folks as they call in. My point in saying that is, the strategy for maybe keeping and retaining some folks, you've done one, well, you're gonna consider one on Tuesday night, the TCS were included in the pay study, as you heard Matt said. I had them run back through to check the market, they were off a little bit, so that'll get an adjustment, which helps. I don't know that all of this, as we do exits from people that leave, and Tony can either back me up on this or tell me, is, everybody's not. Tony can either back me up on this or tell me, is everybody's not leaving because of pay. Some of it is the job. They're not getting time off. Under a normal set of months working, they've got days on, days off, and then a weekend. And then the following week, they flip the days off, and then they get off a weekend. Well, when they're constantly on call, they're not getting any time off. Now, again, here comes some Calvary through the academy, but what I'd like to have do, and Rob's got the lapsed salaries to be able to do it, is twofold. They go through the pay study, which that'll be considered Tuesday night, or threefold. That's one. Two, bump up the on-call stipend per hour. Take it to, uh, I think it's an extra dollar and a half per hour if they have to come in on call. In other words, they weren't planning to work, but they got called in. Uh, I mean, yes, it's above and beyond overtime, but it's, it's, again, they weren't planning to do this. And they've had to do it now for an extended period of time. And the last one is something we did a couple of years ago. If you, some of you were on the board, remember, we had this same problem about three years ago. We had the exact same problem, and we had to take some, uh, we created some shell positions so we could keep the academy running. What I'd like to be able to do is if we net some out of that six, let's say we net three, and we have three vacant, then we can take that with the two we know are leasing, not losing. We can run a five-person academy and keep it going so that we, come the winter, we won't have the same problem.
Mm-hmm.
November and December, we keep it flowing and keep that vacancy rate maybe down to ten to fifteen percent. We'll never get to zero. We'll never have people that decide this career choice is not for them, I don't think, for any long extended period of time. Um, and that keeps it going. And then as we keep it around ten, fifteen percent, and we see we're there, again, funding it out of lapsed salaries, we're not asking for new money to do these things. He's got lapsed salary generated because of the vacancies. Then we could trim out some of these shells later if we level off at fifteen and say, okay, we don't need the two, we need one, maybe. You cut one out. Um, so that's the proposal before you this morning. Rob's here, if you got any technicals about the calls or anything going on with the on-call.
Casey does.
Plus hiring too, right?
It would be adding two more positions. I call them shells, but they're funded through his lapsed salaries.
Okay.
So that when we keep the farm, I call it the farm team, but the, the academy, we stop academy here in August, is it the end of August or September?
October twenty-seventh.
Stop an academy at the end of August. Those folks go to their trainers. We'll figure out sometime in September who we net out of that. Combine it with the vacancies we got in August. We run another academy immediately. Immediately, so we also come November and December. We're not scratching our heads figuring out, we're not figuring out this problem in November. We already got another academy coming right behind them.
Unlike Don, I wanna hear about the academy.
What was the academy?
I'll, I'll let Rob tell you more.
What we do is we go through the hiring process. We bring people in and, uh, they come in, they go through a, uh, pre-employment testing. We do a personality survey, uh, we do a multitasking test. They go through the pre-employment process. The people that we choose, background check and so on and so forth, interview process. Uh, whatever number of people that we need, uh, we go through and put them in our, our training academy. The training academy's done at Thomasville, so we use that for, uh, the backup center for that. Uh, they go through a, a predetermined, uh, twelve weeks or fifteen weeks of, of being trained, book-trained on how to be a TC. Uh, so they get to be at, at Thomasville, they get to go through, and they get to, um, be taught, um, by Lauren Blackwaters, our training coordinator. She walks them through, um, the bookwork. Uh, they go and they take the bookwork every other week. We try to bring them back into the Lexington Center, so they get to apply what they learn at Thomasville. Um, once they have gone through the twelve or fifteen weeks, it depends on how long. We run the academy, uh, and the size of the class. Um, they take that information that they've learned in the academy once they've, they've, uh, graduated the academy and they go back to the floor. They're given with a training officer, and then they spend anywhere from three months to six months with a training officer, learning each of the dispatch positions. Uh, it usually takes three to six months before they're, they can actually run a position solo. So the training academy is basically bookwork. It's going to school to learn how to be a TC, and we run that academy ourselves. While they're in the academy, they get their DCI certification, they get all three of their protocols. So we're a member of the National Academy of Emergency Dispatch. They go through and they get their emergency fire dispatch, their emergency police dispatch, their emergency medical dispatch protocols. They get their CPR training and all of the other things that we need them to know while they're in that academy. Um, so that, all of that training happens while they're in the academy as well, so. And we try to run two academies, uh, minimum a year. We run academies as we need personnel. Um, so, uh, an academy is basically that. We, we ru- we run our own training class. We run our own school.
Is it just for our students now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hey, Casey, uh, something y'all said, on-call pay. Y'all get on-call pay?
We don't currently.
Okay.
No, the, the, that's part of the proposal. It's overtime if you, it depends on the employee. If they've qualified, you know, if they've worked overtime. It is a proposal to add a dollar fifty. If you've been asked to come back in on top of that as another strategy for
I'm reading about.
Raising the gap between the folks that have had to endure this for a little while and may have to endure it some more as things, cause we lose folks. And, and, but hopefully going, as you can see, and I go back to pay for a reason. You'll remember a few weeks ago, I sent some of the other counties this vacancy rates. I won't name the counties, but one of them in particular just raised their pay well above ours in terms of starting pay and still running twenty-five percent vacancy rate.
I was wondering about that, because I know the sheriff department had a vacancy rate and the EMS, and I didn't know if we were providing them on-call pay too.
Well, no, I mean, it's, no, it's, uh, they just get overtime, you know, qualify for overtime. This is a strategy, a purposeful strategy to do something different for this particular job because of what we, we were experiencing. Cause we can't not have a floor with at least, we like to have, well, they like to have six. Typically, we want seven on the floor. So, I mean, there's been times where we've been down below that. That runs a risk. It's a very risky proposition in terms of answering calls.
As far as, you know, the, the turnover that we have on a management perspective, are there management issues that, that y'all have going on there that may be running people off, or maybe, you know, things that you've had to correct? Cause I know sometimes we can have, you know, bad seeds and things, maybe new, new policies that you've created or new hours or whatever like that. I, there's an issue somewhere, maybe it is training, and these things can help. But, uh, we just need to find the root cause of maybe what's going on.
The data that we have, Casey mentioned, doesn't suggest that there's any kind of management issues, um, with the people that have left. What HR has done, um, and we're still in the process of doing, so I was hoping we'd have it by today, but we don't. We, um, we have a, we started doing an exit interviews, uh, questionnaire with everybody who leaves. So it's across the county. But we took that questionnaire and we do it electronically, and we sent it to the employees who have left nine one one center in the last year and a half. Just don't have those results back yet. The next step is that we will also take, um, create a questionnaire for telecommunications, which is this position.
So you don't have the results? So we really don't know yet.
If there's a management issue?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Madam Chair, in the interest of time, I move that we put this on the consent agenda Tuesday.
Can I answer the question?
Yeah.
Cause I actually have the six. So of the six people that left, two transferred to the sheriff's office. Two left because that they had issues where they said that they mentally couldn't do the job. One left, uh, for cause, they were dismissed for cause. Um, uh, it's a, a management situation where they left because there was something that, there was a management situation. Uh, the other left because he thought he was gonna go make a, to a job making significantly more money, and it didn't work out for him, and he went back to the field that he did before. Uh, the two that left because of the issues, and we're seeing this more often now, where people come and they work for nine one one, and they'll come to me and they'll say, I just can't do this job mentally. Um, that's why we instituted in the next academies that will have the personality survey to see if we can weed that portion out as well. So of the six that have left this year, those are the reasons why they specifically have told me that they've left, and Tony can address that as well when he gets his information back.
Thank you, sir.
I got a quick question, Madam Chair, and I respect, uh, Commissioner McClure's, uh, move there. But I got a question on, uh, training. I hear twelve weeks to fifteen weeks training.
In the academy, yes, sir.
What is the mandatory training? I just read online forty hours is the mandatory training. Is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure which, what training you're referring to.
I guess whatever you send in them to be a nine one one dispatcher.
Certification.
Yeah, certification, I guess.
The training that we do through the National Academy, there's three days for each of the three certifications. The CPR class is, is a, is a separate certification. And then there's also, um, the certifications that we do for them are, are national certifications.
And, and I get that, but what is the minimum requirements?
So there's a, there's a sheriff's standard that's a, that I believe is a forty-hour class, but the we, where we're not under a sheriff's department, we don't have to do, we, we're not, we don't have to do that, that certification. We do our own certification with those National Academy classes. That's why we have the twelve weeks, because we train them basically on how to be a Davidson County telecommunicator with those additional tele.
And I like that, and I can appreciate that, but you're investing three months in somebody that may work two days and go, this just ain't for me.
And, and that, that's correct. The training class when I got here was, was actually significantly longer. It was probably close to six months to a year. So we weeded it down to twelve to fifteen weeks and tried to get it to where it's m- more in line with what they need to know to get into the room and tried to get them into where, I'm sorry, I'm getting dry mouth.
No, that's fine.
Tried to get into what, what they need to know to get into the room and get in with a CTO, so that the CTO can actually start training them on the radio and on the phones.
So if you got a three-month training process, when are they, uh, available for full-time employment after?
So they're full-time once they, once we.
Yeah, once they get done.
Once they get into the academy, they're full-time with us.
So they're full-time.
They're full-time right away. Once we get them out of the academy and onto the floor with a CTO, then it takes about, about three months from that point before they actually come acclimated to the floor and are signed off to work their first console solo. So we, we usually have about six months into them before they're actually turned loose to run a radio by themselves, and that's typical for any center.
Well, it may be typical, and maybe that's part of the problem, you know? I'm not saying it is or it's not, but I'm just saying, when you invest three months into somebody before you even know the first night you put them on the floor, that they're gonna walk out and go, this ain't for me. Or they try, you, you've spent a lot of time and invested a lot of taxpayers' dollars into somebody that says, this, this ain't for me. So maybe y'all need to relook at the way y'all train and maybe do some more own, own-hand training up front to see if they even like it before you, you spend three months with them.
We've done some, we're, we're doing, we do observation where we have, we were doing observation before COVID. We've, we're going to reinstitute the observation. Plus, that's why we did the, the pre-employment, the personality testing. We're trying to do some more up front so that we don't have the hope, hey, this is not for me. So we're trying to do more up front so that we're not wasting taxpayers' money, um, just to see if this is for them. Uh, the, the process is pretty exhaustive, um, to hire a TC and get them on the floor. Um, I, I don't disagree with you. It does take a lot of time to get somebody on the floor. I mean, it's a long process.
Like I say, I mean, I'd rather, me personally, see them achieve this in steps than to throw it all at them at one time and then throw them on the floor and hope they like it. You can do all the personality tests you wanna do, but that don't guarantee that somebody's gonna like the job that you're throwing them in. It may help some, but again, till you put hands on, in my opinion. But anyhow, I just wanted to say that before.
Real quick, what we've done also to help that process is, is that the training academy was, they were, they were in class for that six months, they never got to see the floor. So now what we're doing is, is we're bringing them back and forth to where they see the floor. They work a day shift and then a night shift while they're in the academy, so they're being able to be exposed to the floor during that first twelve weeks. So they're actually getting a part of that. Plus, they're also seeing what's going on while they're in Thomasville. We now have the equipment available to them, so they're hearing and seeing what's going on. They're listening to phone calls. They're more, it's a more realistic training than it was before, because before they weren't able to hear, hear radio traffic, they weren't able to monitor phone calls. They were only getting CAD before. They weren't actually getting all of the other equipment before. So we're doing more now to actually give them a more realistic training experience so that they kinda know what they're getting into, in addition to having, when we can, have them doing observation and so on and so forth, so that they kinda know what they're getting into. Plus, when I go, when I take them through the interview process, I walk them through, at the end of the interview, I ask them, I, I've got about, uh, about a three or four-minute process where I walk them through, these are the kinda things that you're gonna be involved with. Are you sure that you're, you wanna do this? And, and I do try to, for lack of a better word, scare them into, this is what you signed on for. Are you sure you wanna do this kinda job? So.
And I've done that for thirty-five years myself, and you still don't know till you put them on the job.
Everybody who, and, and what I find is, people now that, young people now, they're always looking for a job. When we were looking for a job, we looked for a career for thirty years. If you can get somebody now and keep them for five years, you're, you're doing good. When we talk to young people now who want a job, I don't talk to them about retirement. I talk to them for, about being five-year vested. I talk to them about staying with the county for five years and, and getting that, and talking about what vested is. So, I mean, it, it's a different world now when we're gonna hire people.
Madam Chair, I repeat my motion.
Okay.
And I'll be quiet.
Would you, thank you, would you, uh?
We have a motion, or I have a motion to put this on Tuesday on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Are we just doing to buy consensus?
Consensus, yeah, I would guess, right? Consensus, we just move it instead of a motion.
Yes, okay.
We don't usually vote on Thursday.
Nope.
That's true.
Thank you for answering our questions.
I just wanted to get out of here.
Okay, I know. May have a motion a second to go in a closed session.
So move.
We're not going to have attorney-client, we're gonna have economic development and real property. Okay? Okay?
Wait, wait, wait. Can't do it until our motion.
No.
Okay, we're back live. Motion and a second to return to open session. Mr. Florum.
Yes.
And Mr. Shores. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Florum.
Madam Chairman, there were four matters that were considered by the board in closed session. The first was for attorney-client. The board gave counsel direction for further action. There were two matters that were considered under economic development. The first was for informational purposes. The second one, the board gave the county manager instructions for further action. And the final matter was with regard to real property. And that was only for informational purposes. No action was taken. Thank you.